Good morning, welcome to our regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Supervisors. If you would please stand and join us in a flag salute. Remain standing for a moment of silence. We'll be led this morning by Supervisor Mike Guinness.
Please join me in saluting our great American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. Start with our first item of Board of Supervisors matters and I'll turn to Supervisor Vanderpoel.
All right, thank you Mr. Chair. See, I was in here on time this week, got my clock, clocks all squared away. Few meetings I wanted to go over, public meetings I want people to be aware of that are taking place this week. There's a Board of Retirement meeting Wednesday, December 12th at 8:30 at the Tassera Board Room. There's a First Five Commission meeting right here at the Board of Supervisors chambers Thursday at 10 o'clock. And then ResCom, a company based out of Tulare, will be having their annual company Christmas party, Christmas luncheon, where all proceeds will actually go towards supporting the American Red Cross, or I'm sorry, the Salvation Army. Why did I put Red Cross on here? I typed these notes up, it's the Salvation Army. And that's at 11:30 in Tulare this Thursday at the Heritage Complex. And then next Monday, the San Joaquin Valley Clean Energy Organization will be having a board meeting in Fresno at 9:00 AM. That is a new board that I will be serving on and look forward to doing that. So that's all I have for this week, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Tucker.
Okay, I'll make it short and sweet, somewhat short. Speaking about short, I'd like to wish first of all, our colleague, Mr. Crocker, a happy birthday today.
Ah, today's the day.
Yes, actually, actually the day today, so.
I really liked your meeting, too.
How's the tea?
That was great.
I searched for that one. So happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
You'll reach puberty one day, but you're on your way. Other than that.
Someday I'll be able to participate Movember.
Movember, yes you will.
Are you old enough to be on the board?
No.
I just want to say, yesterday I had my Health Advisory Committee meeting and I just want to thank the folks there. We had a wonderful presentation regarding our public health nurses. They do a lot in our community, providing education, immunizations, a lot of different things out there. So it was a great report. Tomorrow morning I have a Workforce Investment Board meeting. And then on Thursday I will be attending the PAL Bike Giveaway in the Open House of the Sheriff and Fire Department. And I also want to just say, I'm sure we've all heard about what happened in Tulare the other night with the shooting of the officer and the death of the K-9 officer. So of course, keep them in our thoughts and prayers.
Supervisor, birthday boy, Crocker.
Uh oh, are you gonna sing for him?
Well, that would be a treat, wouldn't it? Last week I attended RCRC's board meeting. We elected a couple of new officers to the team. Darren McDaniel from Merced Counties will be first Vice President and Stacy Corliss from Mono County will be second Vice President. Supervisor Doug Teeter from Butte County was interested, but in light of the campfire, his home was lost. He was one of the victims of the campfire. And so he pulled out of the running to wait. And, but he shared some, some personal stories of people that miraculously were able to escape the tragedy, including himself and his wife. And it's, you know, there's, there's, there's glimmers of hope in, in, in these type of tragedies. And, and so it was, it was great to hear that. One thing he talked about, I won't share any of the other scary details, but he, he did say that the fire was going 300 feet a minute. And so, in the context of that was that there's no warning system anywhere that's going to be able to provide the proper warning to get people evacuated and out of their homes if it's, if the fire is traveling that fast. And so I think that as we look at, you know, how do we prevent and how do we try and avoid future catastrophes, that, you know, some things, it, it just, we're not able to get to. So one other highlight from RCRC's board meeting is that we approved a budget. Their budget is over $9 million annually. And dues make up less than half a million of that. So the vast majority of our dues are really just, I think our dues are like $16,000, $15,000 annually. And we get the, we get the privilege of having 30 great lobbyists at our disposal to help with a lot of our rural issues that we share with some of our other counties. Yesterday, we had a TCAG board meeting and it was one of the better, more, I think, exciting meetings that we have over the year. Because we get to look at all the great projects that all of the agencies have accomplished and some of the future ones on the horizon. So all eight cities in the county showed a lot of different work and progress that we've, that we've done over the years and over the last year in particular. And we've really done a lot. We're not quite at the $2 billion mark for Measure R and what, and $2 billion worth of projects, but we're really close. And, and so it's, you know, that's a tremendous amount of, of work that's happened over the last 11 years since its inception. And then tomorrow I will be traveling up with TCAG. We'll be meeting some of our new legislators in Sacramento and their staff. We have, in Tulare County, we have three new senators that are representing our area that have never represented Tulare County before. So it will be nice to make sure and have them understand what some of our transportation needs are. And some of the projects we have, I know Mayor Link from City of Visalia is in the audience and he will also be attending that. So pray for, for Mr. Link, because he has to deal with me for two days. That's all I have.
Someone shorter than him.
That's right.
Supervisor Guinness.
Thank you, thank you Mr. Chair. Yeah, I attended the TCAG meeting yesterday, my last. And the thing that I, I noticed, and I had somebody around me say it, all the different cities and everybody was there, but I didn't see anybody really concentrating on roads. And let me tell you something, I know the county has problems with our roads. We got over 3,000 miles of them that we take care of. But if you drive around your cities, and I don't care what it is, Porterville, Tulare, any of these cities he's made your cities, they got, they got a big road problem. And I know Tulare had the Dirty Dozen, but I don't know what happened to that. They did away with it. And, but every time I travel in, especially in Porterville's got some bad roads. I'm sorry. They, they have bad roads. And I mean, it's not just one road, it's a lot of their main arteries. So I hope that with this measure that passed, which Tulare County voted against it, they take that money and use it to fix those roads. Because that's one of the most important things that the people in that community drive on is those roads. And, and I know I'm constantly talking to Johnny and the guys at RMA about roads. And, and it's, it's a big problem. But I would like to see more emphasis put on roads and trying to fix the roads a little better in our community. So that's something that I'll be, you know, looking at even as I get off the board, is continuing to fight for better roads for our people. This Thursday, I'll be cooking at the Porterville Area Agribusiness Luncheon, which I've been a member of since 1978. And looking forward to that. And that's all I have for the week. Thank you.
We'll give you the title of Road Commissioner Emeritus when you retire. Yes, as Mike said, we're sort of checking off the boxes, you know, the last TCAG meeting. Next Tuesday will be our last board meeting. And so things are kind of winding down here rather quickly. I did want to point out kind of a neat thing. Yesterday, our RMA sent, had done a video on their, talk about roads, on their graveling, you know, operation that where we do that, lay down the oil and put down the gravel. And they did 76 miles this last year of that in Tulare County. And it was a great video. Appreciate having it sent to us, Reed. It was a lot of fun. The intro was a little long, but, but it was really great.
Best movies start out slow.
Yeah, it was really fun. This Thursday, we will have a meeting up in Oroce on the Northern Tulare County Regional Water Authority. Here, see if you had any response back from Cutler and Oroce's irrigation or water districts, see if they're interested in participating with us as we go forward, seeking funding and moving forward with a surface water treatment facility, which would be servicing much of the northern part of the county. And then I will be a part of a panel on Thursday in Tulare at the AGTEC on the Seve Salts Program. This is something which I imagine 99% of the people know nothing about, but it's been on the radar for some time with the regional water boards and the water district, water agencies. Dealing with, in our area, not so much about salt problem, we, there's salt issues, that's more of a west side problem, but with nitrate problems. And looking at developing, I mean, it's, it's, it could almost be like Sigma where you actually could set up different agencies. My, my approach is going to be, as I speak tomorrow, we don't need another water agency. We need to try to fold this into Sigma or some other existing water program. We don't need to just keep proliferating these, because otherwise it just takes up an awful lot of staff time and energy. And at the end of the day, they're all connected, whether it's nitrates, whether it's Sigma, where we're talking about water quantities, or Erwimps, where we're looking at projects to improve our water quality and so forth. So they all, they all work together. And better to have them connected than to have separate. And I believe that's the last thing I have on my calendar. And we will then move on to item two, which is a presentation given by the Tulare County Treasurers Project.
There's a slight difference. We are the, I'm sorry, my name is John Greening. I'm part of the project team of the Tulare County Treasurer, Treasurers. We wish we had a treasury, but unfortunately we don't. This is a volunteer effort that started in August of 2011. We made a presentation to the board three or four years ago, and some of you have joined the board since. So we'd like to give you an update. And those that might not be acquainted with the website, introduce that to you. It's a website about the conserved places within Tulare County. We have a short video to introduce you to that, to give you a little sense of what is on the website. And then I'll try to explain a little better.
Some of the hot chip AOC, which sits at 8,502 feet above sea level, is on a dome of granite. So it's a unique location. From the lookout, I'm looking out to the east to some of the highest peaks in the lower 48 states. And the snowpack on those peaks melts into our water sheds, like the Kings River, which flow out to the valley floor, which irrigates the crops that feed much of the world. We get almost 6,000 people a year at Buck Rock from all over the world. But what makes my heart swell is that so many of those people remember coming as grandchildren. Now they're bringing their grandchildren. So kids can come and learn something about fire ecology and the land and the giant sequoia. And perhaps with that, get a sense of stewardship, a feeling that they want to help protect for future generations. Important places like Buck Rock and other treasures in Tulare County. I found the Ideal Ranch, and I said I have to save this. And then about a week or two into the escrow process, I found out that an historical building, the Cuyahoga Post Office, was included in the 32 acres. And.
And this is why we need technology upgrades in our board chambers.
Part of what we're do, part of what we're doing is trying to tell stories about the people who preserve places in Tulare County. People come to visit the county and many of them go to Giant Forest and other places and come back, stay in Visalia, Porterville, and then leave. There's a lot of people in Tulare County that don't know what is here. And there's a tremendous number of things available. And a lot of people have spent years trying to preserve some of these places. So all of our sites, we have a webpage for 50 different places in Tulare County. We have still 20 some more to go. Each website has pictures, about an 800-word article about the history of the area or description of the, the thing. It may be something like Giant Forest, or Allensworth Historical State Park, or lesser-known things like Quiddicker's Forest, the Zalit House in Porterville. They're all over the county. The Dinuba Railroad Museum. I didn't even know about it until we got started into it. And we've all, there's this team of about eight of us. And we've found a, a number of places. And doing the, the historical research is really, really fascinating. We'd hope to show you a sample webpage. As I said, there's 40, 50 articles. We have 18 videos up. And a lot of these videos are interviews of people that did the ground-level work in conservation. Some of them are fairly elderly. And so it's developed into a primary historical research. We have all the video material now stored at the Annie Mitchell Room of the Tulare County Library. So it's available to anyone that wants to use it anytime. Let's see. As I said, the webpages would have, there's an interactive map. You can go to any of the cities in Visalia and see what is around there. We're a volunteer group, mostly self-funded. We've gotten two grants from the Tulare Historical Society for video equipment. We are self-taught webmaster and videographers. And it's been a real learning experience for some of us, let me tell you. We also maintain a Facebook page to try to post events at these particular sites. The limitations on what sites we will include are very simple. It must be conserved and it must be open to the public at least one day a year. And there's actually one site that's one of the Sequoia Riverlands Trust preserves that is open one day a year for a field trip. So, making progress?
I have a question, since we're, are you, do you guys have a 501(c)(3) status?
Nope.
Okay.
We talked about it at a time and approached a couple people. And it turned out to be more work than, it's a really low-budget operation. So as I said, a lot of it's self-funded. We do not need a huge amount of financing for it, the way we're doing it. Again.
Nice to hear.
Yeah. It's, well, and there's, we have people from, while we're waiting, let me just sort of do a little introduction. Greg Schwaller is working most with the, the computer and video part of it. Lori Schwaller, also a Three Rivers resident. Paul Hurley, who I'm sure many of you know. Louise Jackson, historical and Native American author from Three Rivers. Shirley Kirkpatrick from Lynn Cove. Many of you'll know her through the Farm Bureau work. I'm a retired COS professor. We have an art professor from COS working with us. And a few others, Nancy Bruce from Tulare County Office of Education and Circle J Ranch. And so it's a, a group of people that, we control our own time. We don't need to work on deadlines. We, it gets done when we can. We have a leader who is, drives us pretty hard. But it's a volunteer group. Here's a, just a card with the web address for you and some information.
Website's up on.
Okay, this is the website. And I think he's gonna try.
Try the video.
Yeah, this would be the home, homepage.
through, you just want to talk about what we're looking at, that might be.
...to the valley floor, which irrigates the crops that.
That better, or?
...much of the world. We get almost 6,000 people a year at Buck Rock from all over the world. But what makes my heart swell is that so many of those people are from here, from Tulare County. They remember coming as grandchildren. Now they're bringing their grandchildren. So kids can come and learn something about fire ecology and the land and the giant sequoia. And perhaps with that, get a sense of stewardship, a feeling that they want to help protect for future generations. Important places like Buck Rock and other treasures in Tulare County. I found the Ideal Ranch, and I said I have to save this. And then about a week or two into.
Not sure the audience can hear this.
...that an historical building, the Cuyahoga Post Office. So I suddenly found myself in the role of also a conservationist of buildings as well as the land. And every day, people come from all over the world. It is a treasure. And it is a piece of history. So that when the children come, not only is it cute, but you try to explain that this building has represented a community for 120 years. Our premise was that we would grow kids by planting gardens. Botanical garden was just a piece of dirt that was there. And now if you go and visit our site, you will see that not only have we got plants growing, kids growing, but we also have a variety of herbs that have come to visit us. Owls, the smell, and just the ambiance of being someplace that's unique, that represents agriculture and the protection of the natural resources, especially the wildlife. That I think gives people a feeling of completeness. Amazing, amazing what a seed can produce. This is a very special place. This is the Giant Forest. Many people think this is the best grove of giant sequoia trees in the world. But of the 10 largest trees in the world, half of them are here in this one grove. It was named clear back in 1875 by John Muir, who came, saw it, and called it the Giant Forest. We've used that name ever since. Today, a million people a year come to marvel at these trees. We need to continue to come to this place to enjoy it, to learn about it, because that's the way we come to love it. And that's the way Tulare County folks have come here for 100 years, to appreciate the Giant Forest and to learn how special it is. So when finally came time to write out my conservation easement, it specified this land can only be used for cattle ranching and/or outdoor education. I sold the ranch to the County Office of Education, knowing that they will continue to use it just as it is today. It's 620 acres, rolling oak woodman in the foothills of Tulare County, east of Porterville, and looking right up at the Sierra Nevada, a place where kids could come up and just experience being in the open, where many of them have never been. Many of the kids who come from Porterville, 25 miles away, have never been to the foothills. They want to know all about it. So my first memories are all about farming. And I came back to my dad's farm, purchased an end Tulare County. And now I'm farming it with my life. And we've been there 35, 40 years. I had an opportunity. Someone came and said that they were buying developmental easements on farm property. It's a used easement. And it goes on forever. Farmland forever. Let us be your backyard. Let us be your garden. Come out into your garden and see what we're growing here for you. Let's get the vision during this generation to preserve it. Let's preserve parks. Let's preserve forests. Let's preserve our best farmland.
So from farmland to parks, there's something in your community. Take a look at it and see, you might find some places that you didn't know were there. Here's a typical page. There are photos. Some have a video. There's a map down toward the bottom in a historical article. They'll give you the background to it. So, any questions?
Questions. Thank you very much for the presentation. I know you've been here before. It's nice that our new supervisors have, have probably not seen this presentation. And our supervisors-elect are also in the, in the crowd. So it's good to be reminded of the good work that you all are doing. And we appreciate very much what you are doing. So thank you.
One quick comment. Last week, we approved a project at 99 and Caldwell for Valley Children's Hospital and other entities. And within that, there is some land that's being donated to the county for, we're hoping to be a, a visitor's center. So we'll probably be connecting with you to use some of your information and see if you might want to help us out with that.
Yes, please do.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. I'll take us to item number three, then a presentation of the 2018 Movember participants and announcement of the challenge winners. Good morning.
Good morning, Board, CAO, County Council. My name is Lippi Garza, Human Resources Deputy Director. And I'm going to go over the Movember participants and announce the winners for this year's contest. But at first, I can't find that presentation, sorry. First of all, we'd like to, I would like to thank you for all the support you've given us over the years in implementing this wellness program and bringing this to, to the employees of Tulare County. Movember is an annual challenge, or annual campaign that challenges men to grow hair, mustache, facial hair, beard, goatee, in an effort to raise awareness to the health risks that they face. And such as prostate cancer, testicular cancer, mental health, and other common diseases. The goal of Movember is to change the face of men's health. According to the Movember Foundation, one in nine men will be diagnosed with prostate cancer in their lifetime. Testicular cancer is the most commonly diagnosed cancer in young men. And three out of four suicides are men. We, I reviewed the claims that we have incurred for just the male, the male population over the course of the year since, from 2017 to 2018. And we have at least 26 male members who currently have prostate cancer or have gone through prostate cancer treatment. And 51 other forms of cancer, which includes skin cancer or urinary, bladder cancer. So it, it happens in our, in our own workforce. We all want more time with our dads, our brothers, partners, friends, and sons. And many of the diseases are preventable. And by knowing the facts and knowing how to protect ourselves, we can help prevent these, the diseases, or at least catch them early. And as part of our efforts to bring awareness to, to the county employees, our November Wellness Calendar included educational videos and articles on, on these topics of, such as prostate cancer, testicular cancer, colon cancer screening, and mental health. Earlier this year, we offered PSA screenings that was conducted by Elite Wellness. We had at least over approximately 35 employees who participated in the screening. The test, this test measures the PSA level in the blood. Elevated PSA levels can be an indicator of inflammation, inflammation of the prostate gland or prostate cancer. It is recommended that men over the age of 50 or that have family history of cancer be screened. In November, we also kicked off the Movember. In November, we also kicked off the Movember Challenge. This is our fifth annual challenge. Men were asked to start with a clean, shaven face on November 1st. They were asked to then grow a mustache during the month of November and take a before and after picture. This year, we opened it up to not just mustache, but also to goatees, goatee and beards. Women also played a supporting role by encouraging the men in their lives to take action when it comes to their health. Your board previously approved or reviewed the pictures and voted on the best mustache, goatee, or beard that was grown in November. This year, we had an outstanding number of participants. We had at least over 30 people submit a before picture. Unfortunately, only 26 of them submitted after pictures, which is double than what we've ever had since the implementation of this program. Everyone did a great job, but unfortunately, only can I have one or two winners. So at this point, I would like to ask if Chairman Worthley could come down and help us recognize the participants and the winners. And then also, as I read the names of the participants, if you can please come up to the front and come to the front, and we have a little participation gift for all of the participants and also a gift for the winners.
Razor.
Yeah.
I could use one right about there.
The first is Eriz Zahin from County Council. Andrew Pacheco from RMA. Cass Cook, Attorney Controller's Office.
Yarg!
David Case, Ad Commissioner Sealer. David McMahon, Web Administration. Edric, Edric Frankovic from Information Technology. Grayson Conrad, probation. Unfortunately, I was unable to get it clear before picture, but this is his after picture. Jacob Jimenez, HHSA Admin, Human Services. Jamel Goston from RMA Site Maintenance. Jimmy Ibarra, RMA Site Maintenance. I would like to point out Jimmy's ribbon, cancer, both the cancer ribbon on his beard. John Trist from RMA Site Maintenance. Jonathan Jones, Information Technology. Matthew Robinson, RMA Site Maintenance. Michael Gardner, RMA Site Maintenance. Obet Ponce, RMA Site Maintenance. Reynolds Esquivel, General Services. Richard Mostert, Web Administration. Rob Stewart, HHSA Admin Support. Ross Miller, RMA Special Programs. Ryan Coram, Sheriff. And the Fire Department submitted a group picture. So they submitted a before, a group picture of the before. Kyle Newton, Dwayne Shears, Stephen Murch, Jeffrey McLaughlin, Fire Chief Norman, and Jeff Smith. And also Pete Marquez and Joe Rosa. These are the before pictures. Dwayne Shears, these are the after pictures of the Fire Department. Dwayne Shears, Fire. Pete Marquez, Stephen Murch, Fire Chief Norman.
Some people have more alone than they have altogether.
Kyle Newtons. Joe Rosa.
That was me, Charlie.
And Arthur. Arthur, this was submitted by Tulare County Animal Services. He, Arthur was going to be here, but fortunately, he has been adopted. He was adopted in November, so he has a forever home now.
Yeah, yeah, Ron did take another cat.
He's out for an HRD.
And the moment we've all been waiting for, 2018 winners. Cass, tick second place.
Cass, you're like Susan Lucci. You can't win your second place again, but you're just, you're the Susan Lucci of Movember.
Hey, Cass, where's the motorcycle, Cass?
Oh, he's the runner-up.
And each participant, each winner is receiving a basket with some mustache mugs and a $25 gift card from Target. And some mustache goodies. First place winner, Jimmy Ibarra.
Nemesis, Cass.
And we'd like to get a group picture of everyone, please. All the participants that were here, right? And the winners.
They say they got adopted.
Thought about a week's worth, Jimmy? Was about a week's worth?
Hey, Cass, were you riding a motorcycle when that picture was hanging? You have a Harley you're riding with that? Yeah.
I know. Go on, chief.
Come on, Charlie.
Hi, Charlie.
Charlie.
You're too short, get in the front.
Come on. Hey, Steve. You guys are blocking crack right now.
Yeah, I know.
Stand up.
How are people gonna see me?
Charlie likes to, like, we're honoring a high school team, because he can still photobomb in the back, you know?
I don't know.
I can.
Ross, step a little bit to your left.
Graffmore Wing? Do they play here? Oh, this week, okay.
Are you guys doing a big thing for him again or not? Like a big tailgate before, no, 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 beforehand.
Where are they playing?
All right, ready? One, two, three. All right.
Good job, Josh.
Oh, that, man.
Thank you so much for your participation.
Thank you, Ross. Thanks, guys. We believe yours, Charlie.
Mr. Chair, just to make a few comments. I just want to say thank you to all of the participants. You know, I actually participated again, but I'm not even gonna take a before and after picture because the odds are stacked against me. Look who the judges are. I've got these four jokers who are all gonna vote against me, so it's not even worth the effort. But I will say, this is a really fun way to tackle and bring awareness to a very serious issue, especially in the world of men. It's not a macho thing to talk about mental health or various cancers. And I know when I had a hairy face, even though mine wasn't that hairy, thanks, Amy. But people would ask, hey, you know, you're usually such a clean, shaven guy. Why are you growing facial hair? And it's about spreading awareness, having conversations, and I think it does help send a message. So thank you to all the other guys who participated. It's great to see this up to 36 people participating. I think in the first year, we had four. So it's spreading, and I hope that the awareness is spreading about men's health and other significant issues. So thank you very much.
Well, I think, I think the reason Pete did so well, they left the cat outside and then let it come in and lick his beard off.
Well, I, uh, thank everyone for participating. I think not only does it spread awareness, but I think it's just kinda fun. Builds camaraderie. You know, obviously, there's certain groups that have done it a little bit more and have a little rivalry, and so I think that's fun. And I don't know if we're supposed to say who we voted for or not, but my first choice was Arthur's, 'cause I mean, you can't grow that much hair, so. Arthur didn't win, but the cat, that was, that did, he did a good job.
I was going to comment, though, there was no before and after shot of Arthur. And I think also, there's always, you know, the HR department always has a subliminal message. If it doesn't have a cat on it, it's not gonna be in front of the board. I was gonna compliment the RMA folks. I mean, the timing of this is really good, because in the summer, when it's 105 out there and they're in the heat, they don't wanna put facial hair or grow hair out, right? But now, it's cold, you notice a lot of them are keeping it on, because it feels pretty good probably out there to them, so. Did you want something, Amy?
Nope.
She did, she was a participant last year, and you know, she was a runner-up.
I didn't wanna show everybody up, so I didn't wanna take it, so.
And Chairman Worthley and Supervisor Anis, thank you so much for your support. I know this will be your last year of participating in this event, and your support over the years has been great in helping us bring this to our employees, so thank you.
Even though they've never grown mustaches or facial hair, but that's all right.
But we've been there for you. Very good, thank you so much, all right.
Thanks, everybody.
Yeah. Okay, we'll take up our public comment. Anyone wishing to address the board this morning on items that are not on our agenda but within our jurisdiction, are invited to come forward this time and give a public comment. Do we have anyone this morning? Yes, ma'am, come on up. Please give us your name and address when you get up here and Oh, yes, you're here for some item? Yeah, this is for things that are not on our agenda today. Okay. All right, then we will close the public comment period, and we'll take up our consent calendar. Item number 11 will be off the consent calendar. Item number 22, I understand council needs to make some corrections.
Yes, there were four requirements where the boxes weren't checked. They are not applicable. That is advertise public notice, county council sign off, meet and confirm, budget transfer. And we also need to add language to the agenda that a prior agreement identical except for the term or time period was approved as deformed by county council in June of 2017. There were no substantive deviations from the standard county boilerplate in this item. The proposed renewal does not include any additional deviations, and the only change from the prior agreement is the time period from January 1, 2019, to expire December 31 of 2019. The price for services has not changed, so any motion should be subject to these oral amendments.
Does that have to be included in the motion?
Yeah, I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
Did you wanna?
Yes, and I'd like to have just pulled for separate consideration 17. And then just to highlight item 27, I think it's very important that this gets some recognition. And I appreciate, this is to allow for the road closures in early March, but I think it's just a great thing to highlight a community putting together a Christmas parade to celebrate the holidays and to bring the community together. And I just wanna compliment the Early March Town Council and all the organizations in Early March that are working hard to put this event together. It's gonna be a wonderful highlight for the season for the community of Early March. And I just wanna make that comment.
So we'll take up the balance of the consent calendars. Items seven through 20, through 30, with a correction on 22, and then we'll take up item 17 separately.
Vote for approval. I'll second that.
Motion by Supervisor Anis, second by Supervisor Vanderpoel. Please cast your votes. Votes are unanimous, item 17.
Item 17, I wanted to have pulled for separate consideration, just because I'm, you know, absolutely supportive of this, but I wanted to get some information as to the effectiveness of this program and just a little bit of some statistical information, because this has been something that has only been in place for, I believe, a year, but it's something that I wanna just know if we're getting utilization of this.
Good morning.
Hello, good morning. Chairman, Board Supervisors, Mr. Britt, Ms. Peterson. I'm sorry.
Utilization of this program. This is the second year that's come before the board for approval. Has, in year one, was it utilized? Or this is the first? I thought this was the second. Okay, I thought it was the second time.
It came to us for consideration.
Oh, right, right, and then we fought it, okay, all right.
This is a new program with
I got it, I got it, nope, we're good.
Alliance.
I'll move, I'll move for approval, that's fine, I didn't wanna do
Motion by Supervisor Anis. Motion by Supervisor Vanderpoel, second by Supervisor Shucklen. Please cast, please cast your votes. Votes are unanimous.
I'm sorry, I didn't see the request.
All right, we will now take up our timed items. Item number five is a public hearing, a request from the Resource Management Agency to review and receive citizen input and comments regarding the proposed Community Development Block Grant application activities. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman. Mr. Britt. And today, Mike Washam, RMA. Today, we're considering, oops, this beginning is a good spot to start. Today for consideration is a public hearing for the design phase of the 2018 NOFA for CDBG. So I'll just run through this, and some of this is a little wordy. I need to read it into the record as part of the process for the grant application. We have to dot every i and cross every j. Project summary, the State Department of Housing and Community Development announced the availability of approximately $30 million in CDBG funding for the 2018 funding cycle with a $3 million application maximum for each jurisdiction. HCD requires that two public hearings be held. This is the first one to the design phase, before the application is submitted, to discuss and receive public comment for the proposed application from the county. And this is the first of those two. The second will be in late January for the actual submittal. So eligible activities, being, again, a maximum amount of $3 million for up to four activities per application. Basically, it's two different activities, as well as a planning activity potentially, and then some supplementals. So these look, the eligibility activities and award limits are as follows. For economic development, there's a maximum of half a million dollars for business assistance, micro enterprise assistance, or a combo thereof. Housing programs, maximum of $1 million for homeownership assistance, housing rehabilitation, or a combination thereof. Multiple-family housing activities, maximum of $3 million for rental rehabs with or without acquisition. Public service activities with a maximum of half a million dollars. Public improvement activities, maximum of $3 million for acquisition, construction, or installation of infrastructure projects. Maximum $3 million for public facility activities for new construction or rehabilitation of buildings, grounds for public purposes. Fire stations, equipment are also eligible. Planning and technical assistance activities is maximum $100,000 with a 5% local match, limited to one study to address either economic development or community development issues. Economic development over the counter, that requires a separate application and support for infrastructure and/or improvements. Those are over the counter, based on number of employees and other things that limits that. Supplemental activities must be fully funded by program income funds and cannot be any of the above activities. So just as an example, housing rehab, first-time homebuyer assistance, those are types of projects that could look at. Could look at a fire engine purchase potentially, park improvements or creation of new parks, water wells, storm drains, homeless prevention, construction of a shelter potentially, or services for the homeless. Community plan updates would be under planning activities, or zoning ordinance update would be under the planning assistance thing. So those are just some ideas. And again, today, we're gonna open the public hearing for input from citizens that are here, and I believe there are people here to speak to this today. So the program itself, CDBG program, is, the primary objective is for the development of viable urban communities by providing decent housing and a sustainable living environment through expanding economic development opportunities, principally for persons of low and moderate income defined as families, households, or individuals whose incomes do not exceed 80% of the area median income. CDBG funds are provided as grants to the applicant for the purpose of funding homeownership assistance, housing rehabilitation programs, public facility and public improvement projects, public service programs, planning studies, economic development, business assistance, and micro enterprise activities. The national objective, to be eligible for funding every CDBG-funded activity must meet one or more of the three national objectives. Number one is benefit to low and moderate income persons. Two, prevention or elimination of swamps or blight. And three, there's an urgent need, requires state or federal disaster declaration for the Program Income, or PI, is generated when loans that are funded through CDBG are repaid to the county. So a number of these things don't happen until the house is sold and we may get money back. The current program, the Program Income Trust account that we have, is currently approximately $50,000 of balance, and we're expecting another $50,000 to come in during the next three years. So all PI must be expended prior to getting any dollar of new funding. So therefore, we have options to include supplemental activity to spend down that supplemental, or spend down the PI. So this was because in the past, not our jurisdiction, but other jurisdictions, held large balances of PI. And this is to make sure that the money is reused and re-purbed back into the community. That's why this is a fairly recent and that'll So we have to spend down the PI before we get any new dollars. And again, today, this is a public hearing is for citizen participation. This notice for this public hearing today was published in English and Spanish in the Visalia Times Delta on November 29th, at least 10 days before this hearing. When the public hearing is opened, attendees are encouraged to ask questions about the county program as well as provide input on which type of activities should be included in the 2018 application. Comments and suggestions can also be submitted in writing to the Resource Management Agency. A separate public hearing, again, as I mentioned earlier, will be held on January 29th to discuss and approve the application prior to its submittal. I believe the application is due on February 5th of next year. The county anticipates submitting an application for up to $3 million for a combination of activities based on comments and input received today. So this would conclude the staff's presentation. We request the hearing be opened, and there is a sign-in sheet over here if people wish to sign in and put their names there. However, it's not required.
Very well. Any questions, comments by board members? Public hearing is now open. Anyone wishing to address the board this matter, invited to come forward. Please give us your name and address, and speakers will be limited to three minutes. Good morning. You can use either microphone. That's fine.
Good morning, once again. My name is Juan with Self Help Enterprises. Since 1965, we've been in the community here helping with homeownership programs. So we'd like to take this opportunity to promote homeownership programs. And the CDBG grant, that is one of the activities that's eligible. We've seen in the previous years a correlation of how housing has had a strong positive impact, not just in the job creation, but in the positive economy. So we'd like to promote that. But also as a homeownership center here in the valley, we are also a HUD-approved housing counseling agency, so we see many families that are looking for homeownership needs. And just to give you an example, in your community, for the first time homebuyer programs, we have over 120 families on our waiting list seeking some sort of homeownership programs. They're ranging from Goshen, Ivanhoe, Cutler, Rosie, all in the surrounding areas. So this program would strongly impact your community, not just to bring additional funding source. And we've had a strong standing relationship with the county to Tullary and these programs. So we just wanted to strongly advocate and hopefully consider homeownership programs. Thank you.
I have a quick question. Of those that you mentioned that are on the list, are they currently housed?
No.
Folks? So they are homeless?
Well, no, let me take that back. No, most of those are home, are housed. They're just seeking some sort of homeownership programs. So it's basically someone that's looking to buy their first home, doesn't know where to start, where to go. Through our coaches, we help them with the budgeting, the counseling, the credit to get them on the homeownership. Many aren't ready for homeownership. They're long-term, so we have multi-family assistance for them also.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning.
Good morning. Melissa Valdez, Self Help Enterprises, also with Juan. I manage our housing rehabilitation program. We do also have a waitlist of over 100 people, and we stopped keeping track a few years ago when we were no longer in contract with the county. So I assume that the demand is even greater now. You know, we'd definitely like to see that they apply for these funds so that we are able to assist people with health and safety homes that they currently own.
Very good. Thank you. Any other public comments? Yes, please come forward. You can use the microphone over here if you'd like. It's closer for you.
Good morning, Chairman and members of the board.
Could you give your name and address?
Yes, Michelle Smith. I'm the Executive Director of the Kings-Tullary Homeless Alliance. Our address is 1900 North Dinuba Boulevard, Suite G in Visalia. And I'd like to give some feedback on the CDBG program and potential areas that the county might want to focus on. Communities have relied on CDBG funds to finance homeless efforts for decades. Many communities across the country do so. The CDBG program provides a great deal of flexibility for communities to construct an appropriate response to gaps in the local homeless system. Like many other jurisdictions in California, the homeless system in Tullary County is largely insufficient to meet the local need. Homelessness in Tullary County increased from 666 folks to 790 at the most recent point in time count, which is an increase of 18%. Additionally, the unsheltered homeless rate in Tullary County approximately doubles the national rate, with some areas as high as 99% of the people are unsheltered. Given the scale of the local need throughout the state, best practices highlight the importance of forming new partnerships in this effort. A 2018 joint report by the League of California Cities and California State Association of Counties emphasized that to succeed in addressing issues like homelessness, local governments must learn from each other to collaborate and forge partnerships. The CDBG program is an optimal opportunity to begin to forge these partnerships. There are a number of ways to utilize CDBG funding to supplement existing efforts or to create new and innovative programs directly focused on filling local gaps. Examples, current examples are local efforts are underway to establish low-barrier emergency shelters in both Porterville and Visalia. We will also be reaching out to the city of Tullary to see how we can assist with facilitating that. There are numerous stakeholders involved in these efforts such as the Alliance, Health and Human Services Agency, and local homeless service providers, as well as the cities in those regions. Obviously, homelessness is not an easy issue to tackle, or we would have solved it already. However, tremendous progress has been made recently to start addressing some of the core issues facing homelessness. I believe we're at a critical junction in supporting these efforts and that we need to seek to build momentum in order to make a lasting impact. To build further momentum, and on behalf of the Alliance, I submit that the 2018 CDBG applications should include a substantial portion dedicated to addressing homelessness.
Great timing. Thank you very much.
I was going as fast as I could.
You practiced in front of the mayor.
I was, like 10 times.
Any other public comments? Robert, good morning.
Mr. Mayor, we should say after last night. Congratulations, Bob.
Good morning, yes. Very interesting meeting last night. Amy, we missed you.
I was watching on Facebook.
Oh, you watched us, okay. First, I'd like to say thank you to Mike and to Steve for your years of service to the county. I've enjoyed the relationship we've had on TCAG, and I really appreciate the work that you have done for the county, for Visalia, for the whole area. So again, I haven't had the opportunity to say thank you, but I'd like to do that right now. So thank you very much.
Good morning, members of the Board of Supervisors. I'm Bob Link, Mayor of the City of Visalia, and I appreciate the opportunity to appear before you this morning. The City of Visalia supports the efforts of submitting an application to HCD for the use of the state CDBG funding to address the needs of our county homeless population. As a high priority community need, we recommend the use of the state CDBG funding toward the following high priority needs. The City of Visalia supports the Alliance, which is the Clary County-Kings County Continuum of Care, efforts in utilizing and/or partnering with other nonprofits for the use of CDBG funding toward public services up to a maximum of $500,000 specifically toward the operation of a new homeless shelter. The City of Visalia recommends that the county of Tullary utilize up to the $3 million of the state CDBG funding toward acquisition and development or rehabilitation of a public facility specifically for the use as an emergency shelter to meet the needs of our county homeless population. Thank you very much for your attention.
Bob.
Morning.
Long time no see. See, this always happens. I think some screws need to be tightened. So my name is Pedro Hernandez with Leadership Counsel for Justice and Accountability. Today, I'm coming out of 764 P Street in Fresno. And so I work in six unincorporated communities throughout the county. And just kind of based with, based on community input and conversations with residents, I'm here to also reiterate support for the full million-dollar application for housing rehabilitation. This is something that touches on issues like long-term sustainability for communities, energy efficiency, and also supports other, and leverages other funding programs like, you know, committee and household solar, which of course, poor roof conditions is one of the barriers for widespread adoption. And I also understand that the county can apply for up to $3 million total. And so in addition to the $1 million for housing rehabilitations, I suggest pursuing $2 million for other public infrastructure needs in unincorporated communities, particular attention to storm drainage and sidewalks and road infrastructure in unincorporated communities. I think just looking through the kind of staff reports for the upcoming agendas on the Climate Action Plan, population for unincorporated communities is on decline, and I do feel that investing in this much-needed infrastructure will help reverse that trend and create sustainable communities over the long term. So thank you.
Any other public comments? Good morning.
Good morning. My name's Rebecca Peter, and I'm with Family Services of Tullary County. Our address is 815 West Oak in Visalia. I wish I had a speech ready to make it sound as eloquent as everybody else has been able to do. But the reason we're here is we wanted to talk a little bit about the homeless population in Visalia. Karen is our outreach case manager. She's on the streets daily, working with the homeless, and we just wanted to make sure and bring that information to you guys as well. The need for a low-barrier homeless emergency shelter is extremely important because we were talking this morning, we went out and looked at our windshield this morning thinking there would be frost on it. It was so cold last night when we went in. The same thing happens during the winter, I mean, sorry, the winter, but as well as the summer. There's the extreme temperature, weather variates, and we've got so many people, it's like she said, she sees people, at least 30 of them, she encounters every day sleeping out in the streets, in the parks, in the rivers. There's just such a high need, and we do have a local shelter, which I'm not criticizing in any way, but I would love to see a low-barrier shelter, one that will allow people to come in instead of encouraging them not to, and which is, that's how the clients themselves feel. That's not me saying that that's my opinion. That's the feedback we get from them, is we would like to see a place that they feel welcome to go into. I honestly believe that given the opportunity for them to be in a nice, safe environment, we will encourage them to start looking for ways to help better themselves. Because if you're out there on the streets, what really, what really is the reason to get up and try and better yourself when you know that you have to go right back to it at night? If you are lucky enough to get that job, you know you're not going to be able to shower, you're not going to be able to have a nice meal, and you're not going to get the rest you need to go back to work the next day. So what really are we, how are we encouraging them to try and do better? Do you got anything you'd like to add?
I just want to paint a picture for you. Imagine being 75 years old, back injury, no benefits of any type because your identity's been stolen, and you're sleeping in a drainage ditch because that's all that's available for you. It's been cold outside and in the heat, as Rebecca's already mentioned. I'm very passionate, and sometimes I get teary-eyed when I talk about it. I see it daily, as we shared, 30 to 40 people a day, but there's been more that are out there. I just encourage you to think about funding for a low-barrier shelter.
Thank you both. Any other public comments? Oh, I thought you were coming out. Okay, very well, we will close the public comment period, and there's no action taken on this. This is just information for purposes of RMA to go back and review this information.
Yes, thank you. We'll review the information here, and this is, this is great participation. We've had similar meetings where there was no public input at all. So this is fantastic that we have this input, so.
So what is the process now, Mike?
The process is we'll, we'll, we'll look at these ideas and these thoughts, and it's pretty, pretty well-established, the two lines that we're looking at, home rehab and ownership, as well as the homeless, attention to homeless and the homeless shelter. So we'll look at that and see what types of opportunities there are, and we'll be coming back to your board in January for that submittal. But we'll work closely with all, all of our partners here to develop what type of application we want to submit and then bring it back to the board for consideration before it's submitted.
And while I know this is not an action item, I would also like to state my support with the low-barrier homeless shelter also.
You're out of order.
Sorry.
And Mr. Chair, just to give a little bit of direction, you know, I know that there's been a lot of various state funding and different programs targeted at the homeless issue in the state of California. I'm very supportive of a low-barrier shelter, that we can move that forward, but I'm also very supportive of homeownership programs and a lot of the other causes that were mentioned. So I just, I hope that as we move forward with this CDBG grant guidelines or the application that's going to be brought back to the board, that we aren't too narrow in our focus to pigeonhole us into one particular funding area when funding may come out that's going to address that very issue, and then we've kind of blown what we've targeted our CDBG application at. So I just want to make sure that we don't get too focused, that we keep it fairly broad to where we can move money within whatever is awarded.
I appreciate your comment there. Just as a reminder, too, this is for unincorporated county.
Yeah.
So we have to see how this, how this works. And again, this is a competitive grant, so it's just not, you apply and we get the money, and we have to make sure it's a competitive application. So those, those are the considerations as well.
I agree with Supervisor Vanderpoel that I think we don't want to concentrate. I mean, we have needs that, I mean, homeownership is fabulous, home rehab is fabulous, I mean, these are things that are very much needed, and we've been focused on those in the past. And I don't have a problem with including homelessness as being a part of that group of things that we look at, but I don't think we want to put all of our eggs in one basket. I don't think anybody's anticipating, really saying that, but I just think it's important to keep a broad spectrum. The needs are very great. The amount of money that's available for a problem this big is typical of government situations. So being strategic about it is very important. Yes?
So I've got a few thoughts as far as direction that we should go. One, I think we should support existing programs, activities, services. So if we have existing things that we're already doing that we can help supplement, then we need to focus our efforts towards those. Two, we need to seek the largest amount possible. So I know in years past, we've left, you know, we've left, it's a competitive grant, but we've left dollars on the table, so seeking as much money as we can, depending on the, what we're asking for, but also make sure that it's competitive. As you said, it's, it needs to be competitive. We want to make sure that we get the extra dollars into our county. And then I know in the past, you know, there, we've, we've looked at these, and I don't, I don't doubt that there are needs and that there are, that the programs that were stated during the hearing are very worthwhile and that we have needs for that. But when I look at it, you know, some of our biggest needs really boil down to public safety, and in the past, we've been able to utilize these dollars to help supplement a fire department that's in great need. And so I think that we need to continue to look towards that as our primary goal is providing public safety for the residents of the county. Again, that's not to say that there, there aren't additional needs, but I think that, that the focus needs to be there first and foremost.
Comments, Mike?
Yeah, I would say, I would say stay diversified on this thing and try to get as much of the money as you can get, but try to help as many people as we can. So I think that's the key to this whole idea, is to try to help the people and go after, get all of it if you can get it. But let's help as many people in Tullary County as we can.
Okay, very good. We're now coming to item number six, this is a public hearing. But before we go to the public hearing, I've been notified by our council that we need to meet in closed session, which we have this agenda is for that purpose. session, which we have this agendaized for that purpose. Deanne, did you want to make any comments?
Yes, no, we're adjourning into closed session on item B.
Karen, are we good to go?
I believe we are good to go.
All right, so we're going to call item number six, this is a public hearing, request on the Resource Management Agency to certify the final environmental impact report to adopt a mitigation monitoring and reporting program prepared for special use permit number PSP sixteen dash zero zero six, final site plan number PSR fifteen zero zero six, intended parcel map number PPM fifteen dash zero four zero PSR, consistent with the Planning Commission Resolution number nine five six three. Lot of numbers. Conditionally approved, the special use permit number PSP sixteen dash zero zero six, final site plan number PSR fifteen dash zero zero six. Do I need to read all that right now? I think we've got enough. Okay, now, this is a public hearing. The public hearing is now open. We will have the public, the presentation by staff, and we will continue on with public participation.
Chairman Wordley, Supervisors, Jason T. Britt, CAO, Deanne Peterson, County Council. I am Aaron Bach, interim Assistant Director for the Resource Management Agency. And before we do begin, I did want to pass out all of the mail, faxes, emails, any information we received over the last few days, but I did want to point out to the cover of the notifications, the absolute correct notifications on the cover for the Planning Commission, but it does include the request for an appeal and all the emails that we received over the last two weeks since we notified project. Again, this is the Dollar General store. It's a final environmental impact report, special use permit, final site plan, and tentative parcel map. Project summary. The project's site plan review is for a parcel map and a 7,500-square-foot Dollar General store on a 1.34-acre portion of a 28.23-acre parcel located within the Tulie River Development Corridor under the Foothill Growth Management Plan. The proposed project is within the planned development Foothill combining special mobile home PDFM zone located on the north side of State Route 190 at the intersection with Montgomery Drive approximately three miles southwest of the community of Springville. By way of background, the project area has been designated for recreational commercial development since the 1963-64 general plan. Project Review Committee approved the project to move forward on May 20th, 2015. There was two meetings with the community at the HOA, Homeowners Association, back in January 12th, 2016, and January 24th, 2016, at the annual meeting. Both resulted in a mixed results, and at the meeting, staff was present as well as the applicant, so they did feel that both resulted in mixed results of support and opposition. On February 24th, 2016, the Planning Commission approved PPM slash PSR fifteen dash zero four zero. The public hearing received a petition and comments from concerned citizens that continued the matter to date uncertain to do a mitigated negative declaration and address these concerns. On October 12th, 2016, the Planning Commission approved the ISM and D, the initial study, mitigated negative declaration by Resolution number nine two three two, and the PSR slash PSP by Resolution number nine two three three. The project was appealed to the Board of Supervisors. Background continued. On December 28th, 2016, the Board of Supervisors denied the appeal by Resolution number 2016 dash zero nine seven three. On February 23rd, 2018, the Superior Court overturned Tulare County's previous approval, requiring that an EIR be prepared based on two issues, sufficiency and quality of water supplying the project, and potential for urban decay in the commercial area of Springville due to the project. So, how did we get to today? The reprocessing dates. On June 26th, 2018, the Board of Supervisors set aside Resolution nine two three two. On June 27th, 2018, the notice of preparation was released, ending July 27th, 2018. September 21st, 2018, notice of availability was published, state-approved for thirty days, ending October 29th, 2018. On October 29th, 2018, a notice of extended review for fifteen days, as requested by the attorney, was published in Visalia Times Delta, Porterville, and OPR was informed, state agencies, local libraries, and notification by mail and by phone. The DER review closed November 6th, 2018. The FEIR was published November 16th, 2018, and only received recent email from Brad Dunlap prior to the Planning Commission, and comments and email from persons emailed the board notice. Until we, yesterday, we received the attorney's request for an appeal. The Planning Commission hearing was published on November 16th, 2018. There was two notices published, one for the environmental report, the other one was actually for the PC notice, which is our standard PC notice. Both were done as required by law, and the Board of Supervisor hearing was published on November 30th, 2018. I did want to make some clarifications at this time in regards to some of the comments made, either by email or previously. This project does not leapfrog development or sprawl, i.e. bad planning. This project is not located on agricultural land under the county zoning. This does fit the plan for context of the land under the general plan. Studies show shoppers will shop here, and the market can support this store. It is noted that the vocal opposition to the project does not want to Dollar General store here, but it fits all the local requirements for the building of the store with the approval of the SEQA document, with a conditional approval of the use permit, and site plan, which requires zoning slash design review. So, why does this project fit the context in which, in which it is in even historically? Looking all the way back to the 1964 general plan, it is compliant. Back then, as far as commercial service land requirements, the majority of such operations are dependent on automobile rather than walk-in trade. They are generally located along or near major thoroughfares apart from the central commercial district of a community, within a community's fringe, and in a certain extent at key points within the agricultural area. Furthermore, on retail, commercial land requirements, retail sales projections for the county and community appear in the background part of this general plan. Since these projections represent potential, they were reduced slightly to reflect the realism that every dollar of sales potential generated within the county will not be captured by local establishments. They realized there would be pass-by drive-through traffic, which they would try to capture with commercial dollars, whether in an agricultural area or within a community center. And it even shows so on the 1964 general plan land use map. You will see from this exhibit, the project location is within that blue dot area as pointed to on the north side of 198. It was designated in 1964 for this use as recreational, orientated, commercial, and residential. You can see Springville back then was a rural service center, unincorporated area, and immediately to the south, which began to be, began to be built out immediately after, is River Island. So, what they mean by recreational, orientated development back in 1964, the goal was to capture the recreational market, and for the location of recreational, orientated residential and commercial development, their highly attractive physical settings coupled with their relative, the relation to Coia and Success reservoirs and mountain recreation areas will bring increased demand for new development to tap the growing recreational market. They did realize there was potential conflicts between the growing recreational market and agriculture and the rural setting, and that's why through 2012, we did the Foothill Growth Management Plan, and we had the PDFM zoning, which has heightened requirements for, to answer the questions about how to deal with planning, design, and engineering. These considerations have been addressed by the project changes in general plan policies, the zoning code, and analysis in the SEQA document in regards to the aesthetic, scenic corridor, and carrying capacity of State Route 190, and this project will reduce potential So, we are compliant with the general plan today with this project, the Foothill Growth Management Plan, because that was a little blue dot back in 1964, but under the 2000, 2012 general plan, you can see how much that brown area, the Tulie Development Corridor, has expanded. That's the land use designation for this property is Foothill Mixed Use, which allows uses including retail sales. The scenic corridor policies have been applied to the project design as far as the setback, and as far as the aesthetic treatment of the building. The designation establishes areas within the Foothill Development Corridors for residential, commercial, recreation, and light industrial uses. Obviously, much more intense uses could be applied to this project area, much less a 7,500-square-foot Dollar General store. Such facilities may range from a single use, as this is, to a cluster of uses. So, this is compliant with the general plan. Zoning compliance, PSP/PSR process, special uses, we are requesting a special use permit today. Buildings are permitted in the zone only if a use permit is first secured, similar to other projects we've done before you that did require site plan review. If you're going to do building permits in this county, you just have to go through the PSR process. Buildings are permitted in this zone only if a use permit is first secured. Site plan for review and recommendation by the Planning Commission includes commercial uses, neighborhood commercial centers containing stores, shops, and businesses, commercial goods and services which are designed to meet the day-to-day needs of local citizens, such as the Dollar General store. Determine that everything from a grocery store and hardware stores are businesses compatible with neighborhood, commercial center, and those findings are found under Appendix Two of the Policies and Procedures, number seven zero six dash one, under our zoning policies for the Foothill Combining Zone. Further entitlements of the final site plan are required under the PD, Plan Development Zone. Unless otherwise specified in a zone combined with the PD zone, no building or relocation permit shall be issued or subdivision map without first going to the Planning Commission or being recommended by the Planning Commission to the Board of Supervisors. In other words, it's very simple. Under our zoning and under our general plan, we have certain conditions which are a little onerous for projects in the PDFM zone and the Foothill Growth Management Plan, but it really comes down to if people are seeking building permits. They will ultimately be seeking building permits on this property, so we need to go through the site plan review process. Otherwise, this project would be entitled as is. Furthermore, under the section C, Foothill Combining Zone, divisions of lands, all real property approved or unapproved, which is shown on the latest adopted county tax rule, which is the case, and which is owned by the same persons or persons shall not be divided unless it goes through the site plan review process, which we are going through. So, the final site plan review required for building permits under Tulare County Code, this project would be conditioned to have lighting downward and shielded. It does include a hundred-foot setback from State Route 190, which is required by the FGMP. There are no billboards or banners that are going to be allowed. Monument sign, not a billboard sign, is located on the southwest corner of the property. So, this is some of the conditions we have added, added under the site plan review.
What are our conditions for monument signs like?
Typically, we would potentially allow a pylon sign, but usually, especially under FGMP and under our scenic corridor standards, we go with a smaller monument sign there, as you can see.
Like ten-foot high, or is there like a limit?
What's that?
Is there a height limit?
Generally, we look at about thirty-five feet, but in this case, we've put more conditions on this project due to the concerns by the citizenry. And if you also look at the frontage of the Dollar, typical Dollar General store, we've obviously had to make quite a few changes to the, the property frontage as well.
Conditions to eight-foot height of the monument sign?
Right, we, we've conditioned this project to eight-foot height.
Eight?
Eight feet.
Okay.
Just to clarify. Here's a conceptual rendering of the Dollar General project site, and this is a view from SR 190. And this is another vantage of how the project fits within the context of the surrounding landscape, and does include some screening, so you won't necessarily have direct views into the Dollar General store itself.
That is actual landscape that will, is being required and will be put in?
Yes, the, these are added, added conditions. Like I've said before, I wish everybody could see the project before our staff took a pound of flesh out of it, and we've definitely listened to the community and what they want.
Karen, the, this rendering that you just showed is, has the pre-existing forest service facility in the background there.
Correct. And this is the site plan itself. You can see the back detention basin. In the previous version, that was more towards the front, but it was moved towards the back in order to include more of a buffer area from the backside of the project. They also, the project does meet all the setbacks of the FGMP and PDFM zone. They reduce it to thirty parking spaces. They, you can see the monument sign, there's an existing access point based on the scenic state corridor FGMP county setback analysis. It's a, the building is setback more than a hundred feet. There's an existing water line out in front, and there is no requirement for additional right-ofways from Caltrans, even though westbound right-turn deceleration lane will be included, and an eastbound left-turn lane is allowed, and you can see the two front detention basins, which will be landscaped to further buffer the property and the sites into the project itself. There's the landscape plan. It does comply with our Model Water Efficiency Landscape Ordinance. As you can see, the shielding and screening around the, around the project area. We did have them include more native species this time, including the surcis and some of the other sages and the seaanothus. So, quite a few native California species that would much better comply with our Model Water Efficiency Landscape Ordinance. The building profile itself, the facades are upgraded to a fiber cement exterior siding. The center section of the front facade will be comprised of fiber cement exterior lap siding, horizontal, and the periphery of the front facade will be comprised of fiber cement, vertical battered joints, battened joints. There'll be stacked stone will line the bottom of the front facade to a height of three feet, six inches. The stacked stone layers will continue around to the left side of the building that is open to public view adjacent to the parking lot. This enhanced, enhancement of the standard Dollar General steel structure will better fit in with the architecture of the Springville community, even though we're three miles away, and the decorative gooseneck lighting that is dark sky compliant. Here is the tentative parcel map. You can see the parceling of 1.34 acres. In the environmental and SEQA process, we start with a categorical exemption originally. The building has been reduced since then to 7,500 square feet from originally around 10,000. We moved to initial study mitigated negative declaration to consider potential significant effects. We did studies on traffic, cultural, bio-water, water quality, geotechnical, and addressed all the issues raised during the appeal. The court ordered finalized environmental impact report, mitigates for biological, cultural, geotechnical impacts consistent with the requirements of an EIR. Additional court-required studies for water and urban decay, and both were found to have less than significant impact. The water study was done by Dr. Ken Schmidt that looked at the groundwater around the Delora water supply. It shows no impact by this project. The project use rate by the project of 1.75 acre-feet per year is only an increase of 1% over the historical pumping, so less than a significant effect or impact. As far as septic, the design features requested by TCHSD under the Local Agency Management Program are in effect. The geotechnical report shows compliance with state and county groundwater requirements for nitrification with the implementation of design features. In regards to storm- In regards to stormwater, this project is subject to SWIP and the county design requirements to regulate all stormwater on-site and its large detention basins. The, in regards to urban decay, this was conducted by the Nadelson Group, and they are here if you have any questions about their analysis or their study, and I'm going to give a shot at it. So the square feet of general merchandise apparel, furniture, and other, the GFO, in the spring retail trade area, the SARDA, shows that the existing condition is the equal to about 7,375 square feet in the SARDA as it sits right now. The SARDA could support up to roughly 40,000 square feet and would potentially increase to 65,000 square feet in 13 years. So the project itself is 5,617 square feet of GFO, will not have a significant impact on trade in the area if you're looking at 5,000 or 6,000 square feet against up to 40,000 now and up to 65,000 in 13 years. So it's less than significant impact and not likely to cause urban decay. As far as, in response to comments, we'll go through what we wanted to respond to comments plus the new comments we received today. We did receive a comment back when we were going to the Planning Commission from Caltrans saying they were satisfied with our responses to them, and they had no additional right-ofway is required. As far as Brett Jolly's SEQA requirements, he stated the EIR is longer than 300 pages. These are not mandatory requirements, and as a matter of full disclosure, the mandatory requirements of SEQA, the county properly and in good faith produced an environmental impact report, and most of our EIRs, as this board can attest to, is greater than 300 pages. In fact, they all are. In regards to a shortened review period, properly and procedurally followed SEQA in requesting the shortened period, which was granted by all the responsible agencies. The public does not assist in deciding review periods according to SEQA. Nonetheless, and we increased the review period for 15 days, and obviously, we're still taking comments. The Nadelson Group isn't un, they said that Nadelson Group is an unqualified biased expert. In response by the Nadelson Group and the FEIR shows that they have worked locally and objectively showed impacts by other agencies' projects, including in the city of Porterville while working on the Walmart project. Here, they found none. In regards to Brad Dunlap, he's not a qualified expert. The 10-day review ran through Thanksgiving. These are some of his comments. 10-day review ran through Thanksgiving. There was lack of transparency expedited length. Notice was provided, just so he knows, notice was provided according to the law. All of our EIRs are over 300 pages and generally have the same format. The county followed its processes according to the law. Comments were answered as relevant to SEQA with individuals' eyes responses. Jolly's last-minute request for an extension back at the Planning Commission's was based on their availabilities. Citizens attorney's availability is not a necessary component of the Brown Act or SEQA. Staff prepared the reports and the responses in the requisite timeframes, including from now and back at the Planning Commission from November 16th to November 28th. Obviously, we weren't too busy to respond to the comments. And furthermore, Brett Jolly's November 27, 2018 comments, continued public hearing because not enough time allotted. We followed the law in our noticing and in this case, over, which is over two years long, with an environmental impact report, the county has done more in good faith to afford every opportunity for every citizen to comment. As far as legal defects and noticing, I did hand out the actual notice to the, for the Planning Commission. What Mr. Jolly had is a notice that we send subsequently that goes along with that notice generally, and belt and suspenders, so to say, for the environmental document as well. So we overdo it, and there is no legal defect. And actually, in the Planning Commission Agenda item on page 380, and I believe it's 246 in your agenda package, it does point out that that notice is, in fact, in our agenda package as well. And board notice was also sent out according to the Brown Act 10 days before this hearing. In regards to the 15-day extension, we've already discussed that. Regardless, we take comments to the very end of the process, as we told Brad when he went through the process the first time. In fact, his economic argument wasn't made till he had appealed the project. The DEIR has been on the streets since September 21st, and none of, none of the Citizens for Responsible Growth have given any substantive concerns to this point. So with that, I would like to answer some of the comments that Brett Jolly made in regards to the appeal. I would like to note that we are on day 12 and that we are not, and we haven't received a check, so does that make day 13? Not within the 10-day period. Staff would suggest that you do not entertain this appeal for other various reasons, including the noticing was not defective, that Melvin Gong, time has changed in the last two years, and he nor counsel saw a need for him to recuse himself at this, at this juncture. And thirdly, some of the comments made, which are just cursory comments, were made about the EIR's defects, didn't contain any substantial or substantive, much less any evidence to support those claims. So there's no reason to entertain the appeal. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Hector Guerra to answer one quick last comment we got in regards to, what is it, the celery? No, go ahead.
Hector Guerra, Chief of Environmental Plant Division, RMA. I did at this morning, receiving my email at 12:15 a.m., a comment letter from the California Native Plant Society regarding a special status species, the spiny sepaled button celery. The bottom line is that the population there was explored by a qualified biologist. They did find some present on the site, but when you look at the overall picture, when you look at biology, he covered the greater, near 28-acre area, and in his estimation, there is about 7,000 specimens of that. In the area where the development is proposed, there's a little over 300 of the plants. However, according to the biologist, because that represents less than 10% of the population, mitigation is not required. We do have county policies where we'll likely go out there and say, what's out there right now? Can you protect something, whether it's a plant or an animal? So the point of the, of the California Native Plant Society, which I have a copy of the letter, which I will give to the board, is basically saying mitigation wasn't included. The biologist, our expert, is saying mitigation is not necessary. So we stand with the biologist, qualified biologist, that mitigation is not necessary. That's it. Questions? Thank you.
If you have any questions for us?
Any questions or comments from board members? All right. Our public hearing continues, and at this time, we will entertain comments from the public. Please give us your name and address for the record.
Good morning. My name is Julie Allen. I live at 33311 Globe Drive, and I have lived there. If only I could wrestle this microphone into submission.
I hadn't switched the microphones. It used to be up here, Julie, and I hadn't put it down there.
This was the one that I've been struggling with for perhaps 20 years. It's back to haunt me. In my 40 years of residency, I have been involved with two rounds of general planning for the foothills. I actually still have my 1991 Foothill Growth Management Plan and, of course, the 2012 update. I noticed that for 2012, there was very specific language that there would be no update at that time of the 1981 Foothill Growth Management Plan. You'll note, I'm not even touching 1964. That's long, long gone. General plan, the applicable general plan requirements for neighborhood commercial, which is what this purports to be, for neighborhood commercial in the Thule River Development Corridor involves several very particular requirements where the, the language is restrictive. It's not permissive. The language is shall, not even will, not should, or, not kinda. So, both in 1981 and in 2012, the very restrictive general plan direction that applies here states, "The county shall allow neighborhood commercial centers in designated areas of a development corridor and shall only include land uses that provide neighborhood-related services, i.e. local markets, video rental, et cetera." Since 2012, we've sort of not seen a lot of video rental stores, but neighborhood commercial commonly includes also laundromats, real estate offices, this sort of thing. All right. Criteria for location, design of this type of commercial use are as follows. I'm not reading all of them, but the pertinent ones. The major tenant of the complex shall be a grocery store. Shall. Not should, shall. Number two, the center shall not have direct access from State Highway 190. This project clearly proposes direct access from 190 and clearly is not a market, it's not neighborhood commercial. So my input today is that foundationally, this project, this special use, this proposed special use permit, is foundationally at odds with our general plan. As I see it, as it currently proposed, because of type of use and access, direct access to 190, there's really no good way to approve this special use permit or to certify that My suggestion for how to proceed would have to do with taking this project back to staff. And really, it's not a project back to staff if there is going to be a very fundamental change in the general plan with respect to commercial development in the Foothill Growth Corridors. We need to have a very robust conversation about that in and of itself. That needs to precede any kind of proposal, such as the proposal that's before you today. So I thank you for hearing me out. If you have any questions, I'm happy to try to respond now or at another time, and I will say ordinarily, I prefer your side of the desk to this one. Thanks very much. Do you have any questions at this point? Anybody? Okay. Thank you.
Good morning, Honorable Chairman and members of the, of the board. I would like to-
Please give us your name and address.
Brad Dunlap, 35841 Rio Vista in Springville. Would like to ask for some consideration of the three minutes because of the length of this process, if that's okay.
Mr. Dunlap, are you representing the-
Citizen, Springville Residents for, Springville Citizens for Responsible Growth.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, and I, I want to, I get really frustrated when I listen to the, to the overview, so I apologize for my demeanor right at the moment. My intention is multifold. One, I'm not here to be oppositional with what the county's attempting to do. Two, I am by fundamental belief not a NIMBY. I've taken concern and expressed concern over development at this particular location and an individual development at this particular location, not within the Springville Community Development Boundary or the Porterville Community Development Boundary. It's an isolated development, not consistent with the, the goals and policies of the general plan, nor is it consistent with the Foothill Combining Zone, and I will point that out. I have made some comments on water, and I have made some comments on urban decay. First and foremost, I would argue with you that there is already economic blight in Springville. The only reason there are not more vacancies is because people have taken their commercial spaces and converted them and allowed people to live in them. Otherwise, there's still a number of vacancies within the downtown area of Springville. So whether this project is going to create urban blight, urban decay, or not, it already exists, and people are just, people are just filling their space with residents instead of commercial. And, and water, you know, I have great respect for Dr. Schmidt. I have great respect for Nadelson Dale, and I said that in the Planning Commission. I don't, you know, the biggest fundamental problem I have in the water is that the, the availability of water, good water, in the Delora system that is by definition was developed for River Island Estates, is the good well, one of the few good wells, five, is going to be dedicated, dedicated to providing water to Dollar General, and it just takes away from the ability, if any other wells go down with nitrates or anything else, it crunches them down even further. Plus, they're putting in a septic system at a higher elevation, and, you know, I've got experience up there in a couple different situations with, with nitrates in excess of 100 versus the Clean Water Act standard of 45. So I don't want to spend too much time on that. I just wanted to state that real quick. That's in my notes. You'll get a copy of that. I do want to spend a couple minutes on the fact that the process that is being taken through from beginning to end is fundamentally and fatally flawed. Okay? I did notice that Mr. Bach added the notice of exemption stage for the project. When that notice of exemption was first processed, it was for a map and the project. Then the project went forward into the mitigated neg deck, and the parcel map was taken off the, off the table. The parcel map's back in the mix of the project and is fully at play here. And so you, what you've got before you is an EIR that was done on 1.34 acres of a 28-point, whatever, acre site. Some justification that was mentioned on the spiny sepaled button celery is that a large constituent of that plant lives on the 25 remaining acres and isn't supposed to be impacted by this particular development. Well, this particular development is inconsistent with the Foothill Combining Zone, is inconsistent with the general plan, and shouldn't even be processed. You should be looking at the 28.3 acres, and I feel absolutely confident in my assessment of that. Whether we have a technical issue that doesn't let us get back to that or not, that wasn't part of the lawsuit because, because it was taken off the table and out of our reach because a notice of exemption was filed. Okay? It's back in play for the Board of Supervisors to approve. No exemption, notice of exemption filed back in 2016 or whenever it was done is going to be effective for a map that is in front of you today. You cannot file a notice of exemption until after the action is taken, and you have 30 days, 35 days to file a notice of exemption, defining the statute of limitations. Fundamentally, this is flawed, people, and I, I, I just feel like everything we've said in terms of, we just want time to go through this with you to comment on a 30-day public review period on the EIR, I literally was in Australia for 21 days. Yes, they seemingly did extend it by 15 days, but they didn't tell us. They just posted the notice in the newspaper and said, well, if they read the newspaper, they'll know we extended it. All we've wanted is a communication all the way through this, and, and all we've met, seemingly met with- and I don't know if it's me, I don't know if I can be intimidating. I'm not saying I'm intimidating them. I'm direct. I'm passionate. I'm not here to battle. I was- when I retired, I was done battling with the county and other cities, I hoped. So, I'm not relishing this in any way, shape, or form. But you have a flawed process. You have an EIR for 1.34 acres. You've got a project site of 28-point-some-odd acres. Fundamentally, it doesn't work. You have biological impacts that the justification for no significant effect is that, I guess I heard the number 3,000 constituents reside on the remaining site and only, or I guess that's not the number, but 300 were on the site of- to be developed. So, you can't even mitigate that way because it should be at play. The whole 28 acres should be evaluated and you should be looking outside of that. Land use and planning concerns, it talks about in the general plan in your sections. I'm not going to- I'm not going to hit on all these. You're talking about the mitigation measures that were implemented on designing the building. We don't want the building there. There's 400, we have a petition or signatures, I won't say a petition, of over 400 residents in the Springville area that have said, "We object to that building." And it's not Dollar General. I've got no issues with Dollar General. It's not Dollar General. It's development at that site. Let's focus on Springville. Let's breathe life back into Springville and let's do what's right. And if your foothill growth management plan is flawed, let's bring planning to the northeast, the southeast area of Tulare County and let's plan the area effectively. I asked for that when I was here two years ago. And I'm not saying you didn't do it. I know there's getting things in the queue. So, we talk about the amenities that have been integrated into the design of the building and all that. We talked last week about the- all the comments from Caltrans on needing left-turn pockets and deceleration lanes that are all- they all take horizontal dimension on a right-of-way. I've been doing this long enough where I know that when horizontal dimension means dedication, and I was told there's no street dedication, but I don't know that, that the first thing that goes is aesthetic improvements. The aesthetic improvements is a little band of landscaping between the basin and the road. So, I look at it and go, "Well, I know I'm going to be looking at a bare basin and a parking lot and a couple of trees eventually because I won't be part of that process, nor will any of the residents that are there." So, we're claiming- we're claiming general plan policies to support this project and we're claiming infill near development, infill near employment. "The county shall identify opportunities for infill development projects near employment areas within all unincorporated communities and hamlets to reduce vehicle trips." Fundamentally inconsistent with that statement. It's not within a community. It's not even within the highest concentration of employment opportunity. It's three, as stated a minute ago, three miles outside of the community development boundary of Springville in a low-density, relatively low-density area. So, it just doesn't match that. Mixed land uses. "The county shall encourage the clustering of land uses that generate high-trip volumes, especially when such uses can be mixed with supportive services and where they can be served by public transportation." Great policy, but if you were evaluating a development on a 28-acre parcel that showed a mix of land uses, claim the policy. Show us a mix of land uses where everything's working together to meet the needs of residents without having to drive to Porterville, Visalia, or anywhere else. This doesn't- this isn't that. This is a standalone commercial building. Encourage infill development. I don't even know why that's in there. I drive by this site all the time. It's a grazing ranch. It's a grassland grazing ranch. It happens to be next to the Western Divide Rangers District Ranger Station, which personally I think is more than appropriate on a scenic corridor leading into the National Monument and the National Forest. It's not Dollar General. It's not Joe's Gizmos. It's not anything else. And so, that shouldn't be done. But it says, "The county shall encourage and provide incentives for infill development to occur in communities and hamlets," again, that same language, "or with- or within or adjacent to existing development in order to maximize the use of land within existing urban areas, minimize the conversion of existing agricultural land, and minimize environmental concerns associated with new development." I heard Mr. Bach mention the fact that it's been planned for development for a long time. He went back to my age of two years old in 1964, so I was a little bit lost on that because I think things have changed and it all came about after that. But it's one thing to have it planned for that, but then it's another thing to implement the policies and requirements to achieve that. And that's what I'm telling you I don't believe you're doing. Cluster development. "The county shall encourage proposed residential development to be clustered on the portions of the site that are more suitable to accommodating the development and shall require access either directly onto a public road or via privately maintained road designed to meet county road standards." The standalone commercial retail store is not a cluster development. You can't claim a ranger station next to it. I don't know what cluster, what- I have a cluster concept in my head, but that's not going to be helpful. But it's not a cluster development. Maintain urban edges. We got a three- we got three miles away from the community development boundary of Springville. How are we maintaining an urban edge? It doesn't- it doesn't make sense. And this is the one I really want to get to, folks, because this was the precept that I argued from the very beginning, and that is, it's a 28-acre site. My entire career, I would have loved to have said, "Ignore the elephant in the room and let's play with the mouse." Okay? It's a 28.3-acre site. Somewhere along the way, we partitioned the project under CEQA and thought we could look at 1.34 acres. I would have done that every day, on every project that I could have done that on, if it was proper, if it was legal, if it was ethical. And so, it says, "In divisions of land under Section 18.7, foothill combining zone, it says, 'All real property improved or unimproved, which is shown on the latest adopted county tax rule as a unit or as contiguous units and which is owned by the same person or persons, shall not be divided after F zoning is applied unless a site plan for such division of land is first filed for review and recommendation by the Site Planner Review Committee in accordance with the procedures set forth in these sub-paragraphs. However, the following transactions are not subject to this.'" And there's not a provision there that applies to carving off or, you know, fractioning off a 1.34-acre site to build a standalone building and ignore the remainder of the site. There's not. There's lawsuits. If you- the only thing that wasn't court-band-ated or a settlement over lineage or anything is if you had 160 acres and you wanted to create two 80-acre parcels. Still holding to the large master plan-type concept that I fully feel and embrace that this is what the focus is. Let's master plan the area. Let's don't just chip off little pieces, build it. And then, when I got to Porterville, there was all sorts of stuff where they developed little parcels on the frontage of the road and they left a big excess parcel behind these little frontage parcels. How many of you guys ever went into Walmart in Porterville and they had a fence around a big dirt island in the middle of the parking lot? Just poor site design, poor legacy and all that. And then, and then it goes on to talk about the site plan. The site plan that that's referencing to required for the parcelization is not a site plan on the 1.34-acre site. It's a site plan on the entirety of the site. Let's deal with the site design, and if it's appropriate, let's approve a parcel for financing, you know, because a lot of shopping center owners, they do their financing off of a building pad and things like that, but it's all comprehensively designed. So, I just want to tell you that I just really hope that you understand and hear the sincerity of what I'm saying. This is- this is not a NIMBY thing. It's not a hatred or dislike for Dollar General. This is not about anything, and it's not anything about staff. It's about the fact that we and everybody that signed that list don't believe that this is the right site to be developed in an isolated manner at this time. And I really encourage you to support us on getting planning over into the southeast Tulare County. I would like Brett Jolly to come up after me if that's possible. Do you have any questions, maybe, before I sit down?
Questions? Comments?
No.
Where would you suggest it be if you had your choice?
There's a 1.4-acre site that's blighted. It's a boarded-up building. It's on the 190. They already have a store in Strathmore. So, the only two ways you can leave our area is through Fraser Valley and through Strathmore and you hit Dollar General. Or closer into Porterville, there's what was a nursery, a boat repair, all this stuff. It's 1.4 acres. It's a blighted site, having a new Dollar General that is designed nicely because it's still on the corridor. At that location would be ideal because it would eliminate blight. It's closer to a mobile home park. It's closer to a higher density of residences. And it would replace two businesses, the vacant one that I'm talking about and the one that burned across the highway. So, it's kind of a blighted area that needs to be re-energized.
Not actually in Springville.
They could look at another site in Springville. They looked at a site in Springville, and my understanding is they moved away from it. They did have opposition, but there was also a half a million-dollar price tag on off-site improvements. You and I have seen this enough. We know, and this is not to discredit, Embry is a business. It's all about a pro forma. If you can get that pro forma margin, the bigger the better for a developer. That's what they do. So, and I've had plenty of conversations with those real close to me in this process that, you know, I wouldn't be standing here if it was on an appropriately-zoned parcel in Springville that was intended for that type of use.
Thanks, Brett.
You're welcome. Any others?
Good morning. Good morning, Chair Worthley and members of the Board. Brett Jolly is counsel here on behalf of the Springville Residents, Springville Citizens Group. At the outset, I did submit a letter, which I believe you all have received. And I'd like to note, let's address the elephant in the room. I am an attorney from Stockton here talking about land use issues. And sometimes I get reactions from communities when I show up and there's a negative reaction to, "We don't need this out-of-town attorney telling us how we should plan and develop our communities." I recognize that, and I'm not here to do that. You have heard from Mr. Dunlap. You've heard from numerous other, or you will hear from numerous other people, and you've heard from signatures from 400 residents that do not want to see this project go forward. I'm not here to talk about how this should be planned or developed. I'm not here to talk about policy. I'm here to really address the legal issues and apply the law of facts. We have requested that this hearing be continued and would again ask that at the close of the public hearing, that the Board indeed not take action on this project and continue it to be heard in conjunction with the appeal that we have filed. That appeal is based both on our allegations that the notice of the Planning Commission was defective and in turn, as a matter of law, because Commissioner Wong, who had previously declared, excuse me, Commissioner Gong, who previously declared a conflict of interest and recused himself with respect to this very project, ended up participating last month, and his participation was what gave that commission a quorum and allowed it to go forward, including making his own motion to approve or recommend approval of the project to this body. And this inexplicable rush by the commission and the county at this point to move the project forward, really at the expense of public notice, due process, and even ignoring conflicts of interest, is something I haven't seen in over 18 years of practicing in this area of law. As we remember, we are here because the courts found that the agents, this agency's treatment of this project previously did not meet legal requirements. The court sent it back and said, "The project's got to be undone. You've got to go back and comply with the law." So, knowing that this project has got to be reviewed by the courts again before it can go forward, it would behoove this agency to cut square corners everywhere that it can and not be looking to take shortcuts or otherwise disregard legal and ethical requirements in terms of processing this application. Should you decide to go forward with this hearing and take action, I would note that Mr. Dunlap addressed the piecemealing issue in substantial detail. He also discussed water impacts. Really, with respect to water, the issue here is, in River Islands, the residents of that community came out in 2016 and said, "We get notices from Del Oro that say, 'We have nonpotable water. We should not be drinking our water due to nitrate levels in the water.'" And the court really paid attention to that in sending this project back and said, "That's an issue that needs to be considered." That issue still has not been addressed in substantive detail in the EIR. Really, this is what's called an environmental setting issue. An EIR's got to describe the conditions on the ground and discuss how the project may exacerbate impacts that are already there. Here, the Del Oro residents continue, or Del Oro continues to send notices of unsafe drinking water to the residents of River Islands, but the EIR doesn't discuss that or address that. And failing to look at that prevents the EIR from reaching the conclusion that this project is not going to have any significant impact on that community. That's really a dot that needs to be connected that hasn't been, something the court wanted originally and still has not been done. Finally, with respect to the EIR, we do see what's called the deferral of mitigation measures. This is something that the courts generally do not allow. An example of this called out in my letter that was presented. Notes with respect to air quality. The Valley Air Pollution Control District sent a comment letter on the EIR and said, "We're unable to determine the significance that this project will have on health, respiratory health impacts. We would like you, County, to prepare a health risk assessment so that we can determine that." And the county's response in the EIR was, "We will require the applicant to prepare a health risk assessment at some future date, and then if there are significant impacts identified from that, we will require the applicant to go back and work with the air district to develop mitigation measures that will reduce the project to less than significant impacts." Again, this is called deferring mitigation, which is not allowed. Take it from me, I learned this the hard way representing a mining applicant in the Fifth Appellate District from Merced County. And there, it was a case called San Joaquin Raptor versus County of Merced. My client had proposed a large mining project in Merced County, and part of the EIR for that project had indicated that certain vernal pools on the site and habitat for species, I believe it was a burrowing owl, would be subject to further mitigation if those, further study and mitigation measures down the road, if those were identified as the mining went forward. And the Court of Appeal said, "No, you don't have a basis to kick that down the road. That's something that's got to be evaluated at the time of approval and in the environmental impact report." So, from a legal standpoint, deferring mitigation is not an adequate means of addressing the issues from this project in the EIR. With that, I appreciate you indulging me in a few extra minutes. If there are questions, I'll be happy to try to address those.
Mr. Chair, I do have a question. Mr. Jolly, you mentioned issue with the Planning Commission decision, and you mentioned Commissioner Gong. How many planning commissioners have relations with Dollar General, the applicant here, and have had to recuse themselves maybe in the past?
Well, in the past, the record shows that there were three commissioners who had recused themselves- recused themselves in the past, including Commissioner Gong. Uh, and then, uh, as it came back, uh, two of those three commissioners again recused themselves due to conflicts of interest. And, uh, without explanation, Commissioner Gong did not address, uh, his prior declaration of conflict and just proceeded to move forward with the hearing. Uh, so there's no evidence to even understand why he, if he had even decided he no longer had a conflict, on what basis. The only evidence shows that he has announced and declared a conflict with this project giving rise to his recusal twice in 2016.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good morning. Uh, my name is Barbara Brightoff. I'm the person who wrote the midnight letter last night and sent it in. I'm a resident of Springville, um, 35489 Ward Avenue. Thank you Gary. And, uh, I'm also the president of the local chapter of California Native Plant Society. Um, looking at my letter while I was waiting to come up here, I realized that there is a mistake on it. Um, and because I was cutting and pasting from the environmental document, I think it may also be in the document. So, at the bottom of my first page, it says the CRPR2A designation indicates plants presumed extirpated in California but common elsewhere. That is not a correct, um, definition for this, um, rare plant designation. It's a rare and threatened plant in California. Um, um, so, you might, you might want to have a look at that document to make sure that that's correct. So, um, 108 occurrences in all of California. It's not known outside of California. Um, many of those have not been checked recently, so it's not known whether they're still extant. Some of them are known to be extinct now. Um, the, the 300 plants that occur in the proposed development site would be extirpated, right? And Mr. Garrett is correct when he says that there's, what, 2,700 or so plants in the, in the greater population? But there is no provision for...
7,300 for the record.
Sorry?
7,300.
7,300, okay. So, it's less than the 10% and he says it doesn't require mitigation. However, um, there's no provision for protecting that from future development. That, there, that is a totally unprotected species as of this moment. Okay? Um, uh, and you do say in the document that you are going to protect it, right? Project site includes species such as the spiny seepled button celery. Project avoidance of sensitive areas, um, during pre-construction surge, uh, surveys will require implementation of mitigation measures consistent with, um, various agencies. Um, I do want to say that, um, planning documents have certain policies. The county shall ensure the protection of environmentally sensitive wildlife and plant life, including species designated as rare, threatened, and/or endangered. Um, you want to avoid development in environmentally sensitive areas. The county shall limit or modify proposed development within areas that contain sensitive habitat for special status species, and this is a special status species, and open space preservation. I don't know if this is technically considered open space, but it's, it's a pasture land. It is de facto open space. And, um, this kind of development would change the character of the area completely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Question?
One question.
Ben?
Um, you, you stated that, um, it's an unprotected species. Did you mean for the project or at the state, federal level, all the above?
It doesn't have official protected status, but it's considered, uh, special status species because it makes this rare and endangered, um, list, even though it's not officially protected. Okay?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Other public comments?
Hi, good morning.
Good morning, uh, Chairman and the supervisors. My name is Lori Bluestein. I live at 35261 Spring, uh, uh, James Avenue in Springville. And I love Springville. It's a rural community. It's a beautiful community. But, um, Brad had alluded to that there's a lot of urban blight, or like businesses that have gone out of business. And I wanted to bring that out. I totally agree. Uh, the proposed Springville Dollar General will compete with Giffords Market, Eagle Trading Post, Springville Building Supply, Valera Gas Station Convenience Store, possibly the station, which is like a old gas station that they, um, seasonally change it to sell different items, and the patent house along with other small businesses in Springville. And, um, many businesses have failed in Springville because we don't have the population to support them. The Old Chevron Gas Station Convenience Store was abandoned many years ago and it's boarded up, has boarded up windows. Uh, it's right in Springville. Success Gas Station Convenience Store was abandoned and torched by, um, a person and an arsonist. And so, the gas pumps to this day are, um, boarded up. So, you drive along and you see like a, a vacant area that's all blacktop and then you see gas pumps that have boards on them. I, the, uh, there's a vacant building near Success that Brad had talked about where it's how it's RV parts. It's, uh, was a boat repair and then it was a landscape business. And it's boarded up. So, you have this blacktop with this old building there that's all boarded up along the highway. Um, and so, uh, there's a lot of failed businesses because Springville doesn't have the population to support it. There's only 900, uh, based on the 2010 census, there's only 934 residents in Springville. And as of 2016, over 600 residents, and we counted these up because they were attached to the documents when we were researching the history of what was submitted. We had signed those petitions, but they were individual petitions. So, there were over 600 people that were opposing it out of 934 residents in Springville. And we didn't even see that latest letter. So, we didn't sign our, uh, opposition to this letter. So, the, that's only the 400 that they've captured to get their signature. If you don't know about it, you can't sign it. So, there's so much, so many people that are opposed to this project. And we feel that, uh, people move to Springville not for the convenience of living there, but for the small town ambience. This is farmland. It's beautiful vistas. It's mountains. I don't know if, how many, uh, of you have gone, but I would assume all of you at the Apple Festival and things like that. But it's a beautiful town and we have these boarded up buildings. And I'm just afraid that it's going to drive more businesses out. We'll have more vacant buildings. And, uh, I ask you please to oppose this project.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Yes ma'am.
Oma Mansfield, uh, 32934 Riverside Drive, Springville. Uh, first of all, I'd like to take a moment to read a letter from one of my neighbors whose husband is going through surgery today and wasn't able to, to come. Uh, her name is Joan Hafaker and she's a resident of the River Island East, uh, directly across from the proposed building. Um, I'll try to go quickly. Uh, she was in attendance, both of the meetings that Embry was, uh, in attendance. And the response from the residents was a resounding no. We did not hear, um, a mixed review. Um, and she talks about access and danger on 190. Um, she talks about water. We're in a drought. Um, and she talks about the monthly notices we get from Del Oro that say, "Children, pregnant women, uh, old people, people with illnesses should not be drinking this water. They should get bottled water." So, you know, nothing's changed. It's nitrates and uranium. Not to be fooled with. I'm too old to care, but I'm sure that other people do. So, um, Del Oro says they're going to build a water treatment plant, which unfortunately we will be paying for through our rates, which are already extraordinarily high. So, um, we disagree with this. And by the way, I'd like to, with the people who came today that gave up a day of their life and drove over an hour, would you mind raising your hand? Because this is not something that people love to do, to, you know, get on the ra- road in the fog for an hour and 15 minutes or an hour and a half. So, how many people here?
They did. They raised their hand. We saw them.
Okay, great. Um, so, you know, this has gone on a long time and I'm sure we'd all like to put it to bed, but not by having, uh, a building, a commercial building across from our entranceway, um, that will certainly cause traffic accidents because people speed on that highway tremendously. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions? And who would I give this letter to?
Clerk, please.
Please come forward.
Somebody come forward.
Good morning.
Morning. My name is Ken Bluestein, 35261 James Avenue in Springville. Um, to briefly go over some of my concerns that have already been, have been stated. Uh, I think, again, it concerns me that we're not looking at the full parcel. I think that is something that really needs to be looked at. Uh, but what I want to look at, or what I want to talk about mainly is, I moved here mainly for the rural experience. It's a trade-off. If you go to the city, there's certain trade-offs. If you go to the country, there's certain trade-offs. And to me, uh, uh, the country is extremely important. The country can't protect itself. The land can't protect itself. We have to. The citizens have to. You have to. And when I look at the country and there's a commercial building right in the middle of it, that concerns me. That opens up a whole, whole, uh, other concerns that all of us should really have. So, um, I'm thinking if it was some other, uh, project, some other thing, this is a commercial building. Uh, Springville is made up of locally owned businesses. And a lot of businesses have been failing. Boarded up, that type of thing. It's already been discussed. And so, my concern is if you're in the city, okay, that's one thing. But to have the city encroach and, and actually, as far as I'm concerned, pollute the country, that worries me. So, I ask that you really consider that and you think about that in your decisions. And, um, uh, oh, and also I wanted to mention too, that, uh, you go into a community, it's a small community, over 900 people. Look at the, uh, amount of people who are opposed to this. This one community. It just doesn't make any sense. So, anyway, um, again, my main concern is, let's protect the country. Let's respect it. That's, that's about all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning, all of you. My name is, um, Katie Black. Probably assigned Catherine on the multiple letters and emails I have sent about this project. I, um, I just, actually, I agree with a lot of what has already been said, but one thing, on the most recent meeting, which was with the planning commission on November 28th, I myself was in, at UCLA at the Med Center. But I would have had my husband come to that. I did get emails about that. I just double-checked to make sure I hadn't had some sort of lapse, but I would have had my husband come to that meeting. But usually, the email messages that come about that in the subject line will have a little notation of the meeting. And in this case, it had a notation of the plans of the planning commission to, I don't know what it was. But I looked in all the times, in order to see the time of that meeting, you had to open the attachments that were within the email. And I know I just glanced at it because it wasn't in the subject line, that, that there was a November 28th meeting. So, it might not have been as well notified as some of the others were. But in my case, I wouldn't have been able to come in any case. But I am, I have two questions, which might seem really simple-minded. But when, could someone define for me the, the meaning of conditional? When you say you're going to approve a conditional, you know, and then a conditional use permit or a conditional, what exactly does that mean?
Ma'am, we're not going to answer your questions. We're here to hear your testimony because if we get involved in a question to answer, we'll be here all day long. And then we have to talk to our attorneys and all that sort of thing about responding. So, we need to really hear from you. We're not here to respond to your questions.
All right. Well, then you won't be able to answer the question about the water issue. Okay. Then in that case, since you're unavailable for comment, then I will assume that this is a wasted trip. But I will say that whenever I come over here, I think I'm tilting at windmills, but I'm not quitting. And anytime you think you might be able to write me a letter and tell me what that means, I'd like it. So, thank you. Do you have any questions with me?
Yes, sir.
Good morning.
I'm Marshall Black. I live at 40831 Balls Park Road, Springville. Uh, I've commuted through that corridor for 45 years. I'm not, I find a lot of scabs on this project and I'm only going to pick at two in particular. But first, I'd like to note that following my wife at the podium here, it's a chance to get the last word and that's rather a rare event, so.
You're not home yet.
The two things I want to comment on are, one, the water issue. The fact that there is an inability to deliver water that meets fair, the, the safe drinking standards for a 12-month period in any year in my knowledge should tell you and everyone else that any further development in that area shouldn't be abandoned until something is done to assure the availability of safe drinking water in that area. This project by itself, you know, it's easy to understand that it comes through this process of analysis when it's one little building of 700, 500 square feet with the few employees in it. Sure, they're not going to affect the availability of water in that system at all. But the reality is that that system is dysfunctional. And any further development in there that encourages any, you know, this 28 acres is going to be encouraged for further development over time. And you're just letting the founder in and they'll go with it. Second issue is this. I would suggest that planning people take a cup of coffee and sit by the roadside at that intersection from about 4:30 until 6:00. And tell me that safe ingress and egress from that site is going to be any better than what you'll see right now. To have three sites within 100 yards of one another on that little road is, again, unconscionable. And finally, I'd like to say, this is the second time I've heard someone from the planning group implied that Mr. Dunlap is either unqualified or not an expert. I think that was an, isn't an appropriate view and an inappropriate comment. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
So, thank you.
Good morning. My name is Ernesto Garcia. I'm a biologist. I usually, uh, give counsel and make decisions. I usually give counsel and make decisions based on data. I have no data today. Today, I'll be giving you a very simple, very subjective, from the heart sense of how we feel about this project. One of the reasons why my wife and I moved to Springville five or six years ago from Northern California was because of the rural charm and the aesthetic of the portal to the magnificence of the Giant Sequoias. We have a very nice community of neighbors who value this aesthetic. If I didn't value this unique aesthetic, I could have saved myself a bundle by living in Porterville. As we've heard before, our community is supported by a number of service entities, a market, a hardware store, several others. And I believe that the proposal to replace a Dollar General in our community, especially it being in some of the pastures that border the pathway to the forest, that these would threaten the economic viability of these service entities. As has been demonstrated in some of the other communities where Dollar General has been approved. On a more personal level, the placement of a proposed Dollar General store would create an unacceptable blemish incompatible with the more natural, less obtrusive visual quality that we currently enjoy and severely impact the aesthetic that we moved here for. I'm very disappointed, but not surprised, that there have been no recent public meetings on this topic actually in Springville. I've gone to the other planning meeting, and I've also tried to provide input via the email opportunity that we had, and just to find that the site was shut down and didn't accept comments. And I never did hear back about, you know, when or if our comments were accepted after that gesture. I just have one, oh, I just want you to know that I don't feel like I'm an outlier in the community. I just think there's massive opposition to this project. Many of us did not ever hear about this, you know, this letter that was being signed off, the petition. And I wish I had. And I think you would have a greater sense of the opposition via that petition had folks, more folks known about it. I do have a question, which I'm not really going to ask you, but it was, what happens to the place if the proposal, if the infrastructural developments that are being proposed by this enterprise, if they fail? So in closing, I just want to say that I think that the project should not be approved. And I think that the development plan seriously needs to be reevaluated. And I thank you for allowing me to comment.
Any other public comments?
Good morning.
Good morning, gentlemen. Respected Chairman.
And there's a, we have a lady up here, too.
And Amy Shepian, Lady District III Representative, and my representative, Mike Ennis. Thank you for hearing me out here. I am a resident at 32692 Green Drive, which is located in River Island East Community. I'm also a business owner at 356.
I didn't get your name, I'm sorry.
Al Hirani. Al Hirani.
Thank you.
I'm also a business owner at 35637 Highway 190, which is the community grocery store that has been in business for 70 years now. We are the second family that have been running this organization. You can call pretty much anymore as much as we are involved with the community in doing what we do.
Your store's in Springville, sir?
Yes. I'm in Springville. And we are running the market over there for 27 years now. The market was originally built in 1948 by the Gifford family, who were one of the founders for Springville. And they have left, and Mr. Gifford, Mr. and Mrs. Gifford, they have passed on. And their kids are now in Wyoming. They live over there. When this thing first started on, I gave a call to my district supervisor, Mike Ennis, and I was unable to get a hold of Mr. Ennis for a couple of times. The third time, when I got a hold of him, I had only one question to ask him. My supervisor, how do you feel about Springville when this store goes into a boundary outside of Springville? How would that affect Springville and the people that we employ? I know the county looks at approving projects as to how many employees are being, how much employment is being created. I want to let the supervisors know right now that there is, the supervisors are approving a project hoping that there's going to be employment created. But on the other hand, I encourage you supervisors to take a drive up 190, starting from Lake Success, going all the way up into Springville. See what state of, what is the state of the businesses that are on Highway 190, which we call it a scenic corridor to the Sequoias, and how has it, how it has been affected? And what is it that we can do to improve that corridor rather than putting a building that may affect a 70-year-old historical store that may just go dark? My supervisor's opinion, two years ago, I don't know if Mr. Ennis remembers or not, but his answer to my question was, "Al, I don't want Springville to go dark." In simple words. I urge you supervisors to go, and I urge you guys to take a seat back, and I want you guys to go and look at it. And before approving anything that has been suggested by the commissioners, who have dealings with Dollar General or any of that community, and are recommending that the supervisors go ahead and approve a project, just based on recommendations. Mr. Bach, here has been saying, on 2016, it was January 24th, they met with River Island at an annual general meeting and met with the board of directors. I was, as a resident of that community, I was present because I own a home in River Island East. And the meetings were held on a conference final football weekends, hoping that not a lot of the residents are going to show up for the meeting. But I read on there, on over here, that the staff members are saying that their recommendation of a Dollar General right across the street from River Island East was met with opposition and also people that are wanting the Dollar General store. I was present at the meeting with 100 other people. They were very nicely asked to leave. I don't see anybody that has come on this podium and has said to you supervisors or at their meeting that they are in favor of this Dollar store. Why is it that there is negative comments just made here when I don't see anybody coming to this podium and are in supportive of this store?
Can you wrap up your comments, sir? I've given you a little extra time.
I appreciate Mr. Ennis taking the position that he took as a District Five supervisor, since he's a resident of the area. But I encourage the rest of you supervisors to go and look at the area and then determine your positions. Thank you so much.
Any other public comments?
Morning, members. My name is John Shields. I'm with the Embry Asset Group at 2355 East Camelback Road, Phoenix, Arizona. I believe that we have diligently and thoroughly addressed all the concerns of the community, and we want to be a part of this community. We concur and agree with all of the recommendations of staff and planning commission. And welcome any questions you may have from me regarding this project.
I have a question. So did you look at other land within Springville?
We did.
Was this property that you owned or you purchased from a landowner there?
We do not own the property.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment? All right, I'm not closing the public comment. I've had a request by our council that we go back into closed session, which we will do at this time. We will come back out. Public hearing will still be open. And so we will now go into closed session. Okay, so we've met with our council. We're back in the open session at this time. And the public hearing is still open. Is anybody else wishing to address the board this time? Otherwise, we're going to have staff respond to some of the comments that were made today. Are there any other, yes, sir? Morning. Good afternoon.
It's lunchtime. My name is Doug McIntosh, and I live at 37975 Bolsh Park Road in Springville. And I wasn't going to say anything, because this is intimidating, speaking to all you beautiful people. However, I wanted to show support for my neighbors and fellow citizens of Springville. And that's why I came today, gave up a day of work. And this is the second meeting that I've come to. And I'm self-employed. So I'm losing, that's four hours of driving, plus my day of work is gone. There was a couple, you made a point, sir, in your 1964 report. And you mentioned that the, it opened, there was a, as far as tourism, planning business, there was a corridor. And this Dollar General location, where it's currently proposed, it would miss the traffic of people that go to Lake Success coming from Porterville or other areas. And I think that's missing a good market, especially in the summertime, springtime, when you have all the activities there. So I would hope that you would think about that. And several people had mentioned this 1.4-acre parcel that is just below the lake that used to be a boat repair, whatever. I've seen the parcel, I've taken photos of it. It's already heavily disturbed as far as any biological concerns or cultural resources. And so I think that would be a very positive location. Also, at the present, at the proposed location for this current Dollar General, is it for the residents of Springville? And that's what I've read in the reports. How are the residents of Springville that live at Sequoia Dawn going to get there? Many of them don't own automobiles, and they'd wait for the bus for several hours. So those are just some thoughts that I had. And one other thing, and I'll make this straightforward. I'm the archaeologist that did the survey for this parcel at Dollar General. And I had to be honest, when I did the survey, I didn't find anything there. Just off-site, however, there are cultural resources that will have to be addressed in the future. But I was honest with my report to you, and I would have loved to have found something. Would have made my day. I appreciate your patience today, and thank you for listening to everyone that came. And thank you for listening to me. And pray that you be honest with your decision.
And thank you for coming to the board, appreciate it. Any other public comments? All right. Mr. Bach?
Sir, did we want to close? Or are we still going to stay open? Public comment?
Do they have questions of staff?
Yeah. Well, I was just, I was just going to ask you if you could rebut a few Mrs. Allen's points and Mr. Dunlap's specifically.
Yes, through the chair. I would start by stating that the county is the experts about their general plan. And we did look at this project under our general plan. And it's a little disingenuous to say that, it does say shall allow neighborhood commercial centers, but we're not forced to do commercial centers along the scenic corridors and in the FGMP. So it does stay on FGMP 1-6, that neighborhood commercials centers are allowed, and that if we do a center versus an individual project, the center shall not have direct access from State Highway 190 and 198. And as far as Brad's comments, there is an, we do encourage as much development as possible within the urban development boundaries. That's the whole RVLP, that's the whole FGMP. But there are areas, as we showed before, the development corridors that are zoned PDFM and have the FGMP designation and are mixed-use designations to allow for this type of development, whether it's a commercial center or an individual project. As far as Brad's, so the Thule River Development Corridor is treated as if it's within an urban development boundary. And that's what the general plan does. As far as the whole discussion about piecemealing or that we should look at the full 28 acres, if we were to do so, as I told the planning commission, that would be the first time we've ever done that. We look at just the one-acre property. Like I said, site plan review and use permits are for projects that are moving forward towards building permits. We have no idea what they're going to do on the remainder of the property. Last week, we had the Sequoia Gateway Project. They could have just thrown a big remainder piece out there, not done any real sequel on it, not done any development. They looked at the full acreage in that Sequoia project. Here, we're not. We're looking at one-acre Dollar General store. And that's it. The court did find that this was not piecemealing. And Brad's arguments about, well, that was hidden behind the categorical exemption back then. You know, Brad, which way do you want it? Here, we went forward, we listened to you, we put it in the EIR. It's evaluated in the EIR. So even though the court found previously that it was not required to do so, we did so. So we've gone the full measure in regards to that, that whole argument. There were some arguments about our mitigation measures and kicking the can down the road, so to say. Well, we can't do every SWIP, which there's no comment about today. And the health risk assessment, similar to a SWIP, gets done when the project goes through the process by the applicant, not by us. So it's a little premature to require something like that as a mitigation measure. At most, it's a project feature, but it is a requirement of every, every project. I just wanted to ask, did staff have any other responses? This time? And with that, I think I answered the questions.
Yeah.
Any other questions, comments?
I'll have.
Comments, yeah.
Yeah, all right. So at this time, we're going to close the public hearing. Bring it back to the board for discussion and/or action. Supervisor Vandecole?
Okay, so just a few, a few comments that I have. First of all, let me just start off and say that I appreciate the applicant in this project being so willing to change the project and to make this something that seemingly would fit within the community. I think that you can typically mitigate a lot of the concerns that are raised by the public. And it just takes a willing developer as to whether or not that happens. And in this case, they are willing to do so. And I also appreciate Dollar General and what they've done in many unincorporated communities throughout the county. I think they've really brought a much-needed service and a much-needed resource to many unincorporated communities throughout the county. Specifically in this case, you know, I know that some people were very conscious about saying, this is not, I'm not being a nimby. This is not a nimby argument. Well, I have to disagree. There were a lot of nimby arguments that were presented here today. But I am absolutely for competition for businesses. I think it'll, you know, makes everybody better. But at the end of the day, this is a special use permit, and the board has some discretion here. And, you know, I've been very supportive of commercial growth throughout the county and bringing additional services to various areas. I just think that this is the wrong site for this particular project. I think that there are better sites that they can find. They may come at a little bit of a higher cost because of some of the infrastructure issues within the specific community of Springville. But I think that that's a better, a better place to look. So based on my perceptions and seeing what has worked for Dollar Generals throughout the county and how they fit within the community, it's a great resource, great project, just wrong site in this case. And that's kind of my perspective on that.
Yeah. I like Dollar General. I shop at Dollar General. I go to the one on Mooney Boulevard all the time, and I think it's a great, a great store. I approved the store in Goshen. Well, I've been, since I've been I approve the store in Goshen while I've been, since I've been on the board. And I agree with Supervisor Vanderpoel that we have many throughout the county. And I think the residents of Springville and the surrounding areas would like Dollar General also. My thing right now is, like Pete said, it's the location. I would like to see it more in the, in the center of town or closer to within the town rather than just plunked in the middle of the scenic corridor there. So those are, those are my thoughts.
Supervisor Ennis?
Yeah, I'd like to thank staff and Dollar General and everybody for all their time. But after listening to the constituents today from my area, I can't vote for this project. If I, if I was a resident up there, I wouldn't look at it the way that people are looking at it here. I think that a lot of people would utilize that store from Montgomery Ranch and some of those areas around there and people on their way to the mountains and back. But because of all the opposition today, I can't vote for this, this placement of this store where it is.
Crocker?
Well, I make a few comments based on some of the testimony that was provided today. And one, I appreciate the concern regarding safe drinking water. I think this board has taken a stance last year where we were in favor of SB 623 and what came afterwards, SB 844 and 845. I'm glad to hear that so many other individuals in this county are supportive of having a minimal fee on, on water users in order to clean up safe drinking, to have safe drinking water. So I, I'm glad that that's a concern and that we can look at that. I do believe that property owners have, have a right to use their property. And assuming that it complies with local governance and conditions and, and things that, that this jurisdiction goes over, that they have those rights, and so I think we need to be cognizant of that. I recognize that businesses are failing all over and that we do have vacant locations. I live in Strathmore, and Strathmore's no different than any other communities. But I think that it's upon all of us to utilize the businesses within our own communities. If we don't utilize them, they're going to fail. When we buy online, when you go into town to a larger box store, to some other place, your local businesses aren't going to do well. So it's upon us. We have no one to blame but ourselves when these businesses fail. We have our own dollars. We make choices every day as far as where we're going to spend those dollars. And, and in the past, you know, these communities thrived when there were fewer people. So I think it's, it's good to note the context of this. Our communities have grown, and yet we have fewer businesses, fewer retail opportunities, even with larger sizes. And then lastly, I'd just say that, you know, I rely upon the businesses to make a determination as far as where their location is best suited for their needs. I don't understand and know all the ins and outs of, of Dollar General as far as what fits their needs, but if they've made a determination, they've done their due diligence as far as where it's best located. And if that's the site that they think is best for their needs, then I'm going to have to be reliant upon them. As a farmer, I would hope that an individual wouldn't tell me where it's best to, you know, plant this type of crop or something else. You know, they're, they're investing large amount of dollars, or they would be. And, and so I would expect that they've done the due diligence necessary for that.
Well, 20 years on the board, I guess I have not made much of an impact. Because this is a common issue that we've dealt with over the years on land use. And I remind people that under the Constitution, the democratic part of elections is you get elected to office. Before you take office, you raise your right hand, you swear to affirm the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California. Part of that very important right is one of property rights. I think it's one of the most critical reasons why this country has been so successful is the fact that people own their property and they use the property as they choose to use it. It doesn't give me the right to create a public nuisance. I can't do something on my property which is going to cause a nuisance to my neighbor. But this is way beyond that. No one's claiming that this is creating a problem. I haven't heard the Forest Service hasn't come in here to complain about them as a neighbor. The property owners around the property have not come in to complain about this as a, as a, being a nuisance. Nobody's claimed this to be a nuisance. This is a situation where, when enough people sign petitions and show up at meetings to oppose something, politicians say, well, it's in the wrong place. Everybody's opposed to it. I don't care if this room was filled with 1,000 people in opposition to this property. The question is, what about individual property rights? Are we a collective, or are we a constitutional republic that gives people individual rights? We're trampling on the private property rights of people today if we cave into the fact that a bunch of people don't like this project, don't like its location. By the way, that first petition that was signed by so many people was not into this position and this location. It was when the person wanted to build this, build this project within the community of Springville. There was opposition to it there. Now there's opposition to it here. There's another location someplace else. In my community of Dinuba, the city of Reedley had the opportunity to build a Super Walmart. Walmart had bought the property. They were ready to build it. People of Reedley said, we don't like that location. You're too close to the river. We've got better plans for that. We've got another place for you over here. They came to Dinuba. And now they're in Dinuba, and people from Reedley drive to Dinuba to buy everything that they couldn't, they can't buy in their community of Reedley. I agree with what Supervisor Crocker said. Businesses decide what's best for businesses. I'm not in the process, I'm not in the, in the business of telling businesses where they should locate. There's a better location over here. Well, maybe they don't have access to that property. Maybe they don't own that property. Maybe that property's not for sale. That's not for me to decide. That's for the business to decide. So in this case, we have a property which is zoned for the use that we're asking it to be used for. It has to go through a special use process. It's gone through that process twice. It came before this board once before. The board approved it. It was appealed. It went to the court, rather. The court made two decisions based on the, on the environmental assessment that needed to be addressed. Both of those have been addressed and brought back to this board today. They were approved by the planning commission. They're back before this board, which is still the Board of Supervisors, but it's got different bodies on it today from when we did it before. And now we're not going to approve this project. And I feel like this is a sad day for Tulare County. We say we're open for business, but oh, we're not open for your business. We're not open for your business being located there. This is what gets public agencies in trouble. This is why people can't succeed in this, in this country. Because everybody else is going to decide about what your business should be. And I think what happened to the individual, what happened to the right I have to succeed on my own merit, on my own property, doing my own thing? I'm not trying to hurt you. I'm not trying to cause blight. My goodness, this problem that you're talking about in Springville exists everywhere. Have you been to Ivanhoe? There's 5,000 people in Ivanhoe. Look at their business district, how much boarded up and gone. The business model of 1960 doesn't work anymore. People are mobile. They try, they think nothing of driving 50 miles to work a day. They think nothing about driving. I mean, I, my parents grew up in Dinuba. They bought everything in Dinuba. But now people get in their cars and they drive to Visalia. They drive to Fresno. That's the, that's the society we live in. Are we going to change that tsunami? I don't believe so. You have to move. You've got to change with it. So I know the, and I can read the writing on the wall. It's already been stated here what the vote's going to be. But I will tell you, I think it's a sad day for Tulare County. When we put property owners through what this has gone through, two different efforts, major efforts to build this building. By the way, it's very attractive. When I look at it compared to the Forest Service, the Forest Service looks like crap. There is absolutely no scenery around it, shrubbery, nothing. They've got parking lots right up against the 190 corridor. It's ugly. It's an ugly building. This is an attractive bill, it's going to, it would enhance that area in my mind. Anyway, I know I'm speaking to myself here, apparently, but I still feel like it needs to be said. There are supervisors elect in the, in the, in the audience. I hope they will recognize their obligations as elected officials to uphold the Constitution and protect individual private property rights. Because if we're not about that, then we're just about the collective. You know, if a bunch of people show up and say, I don't like it, it's not going to happen. That's not the way we've been operating in this county for some time, so.
Maybe they could build next to your house. I don't, I don't think we should be up here being chastised for a decision that we're making on a special use, this is a special use permit that's being done here, so that's all I have to say.
And, and, you know, I know that we heard a, an impassioned plea from the property owner today. Wait a second, there is no property owner here today. So this isn't about, I mean, this isn't a question, in my mind, of private property rights. This is a question of a special use permit being granted. Had we heard from the owner of a 28-point-whatever acre parcel, that might change my opinion a little bit. But we're talking about 1.34 acres, which is not even owned by a property owner here today. And I haven't heard from him, and we're not going to hear from him. So based upon what I have already said and some of the reasons that were mentioned by Supervisor Shucklin, I would make a motion that we deny this application here today.
I second that.
We have a motion by Supervisor Vanderpoel, second by Supervisor Shucklin. Please cast your votes.
Hang on.
Vote passes three to two, voting in favor of the motion Supervisor, I'm sorry. Is that correct?
It's a Christmas light.
Is that correct?
No, 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 it was, my motion was to deny.
To deny, yeah.
Okay, everybody needs to re-cast their votes, I believe.
He voted against his own motion.
I voted against my own motion.
Motion, the motion is successful, three to two. Voting in favor, Supervisor Vanderpoel, Supervisor Shucklin, Supervisor Ennis voting in opposition, Supervisor Crocker, Supervisor Worthley. All right, that's, we bring us to our untimed items at this time. And those are, starting with,
Thirty-one.
Number thirty-one. Presentation from the Fire Department regarding local assistance for tree mortality program.
Amy looked over and she was like, is that the inside of this jacket? I said, no, it's his underwear.
Good morning. Afternoon, rather. Charlie?
And thank you for choosing me next.
Yeah. Guess it's a good time for me to be going off the board, huh?
Don't make a comment, chief.
You, you look good, clean shaven, chief.
Thank you so much. It took an act of Congress to get the gray out. You know, land use issues are tough. Sometimes it's easier to just run into a burning building. I come before you today with a brief presentation to catch you up on tree mortality. Should we have more time, I'd love to drone on for an extended period of time. But given the activity today, I'll try and be as brief as possible. The bottom line is, we want to prevent some of the impacts that we've had on the Ferguson fire, on the Mendocino complex, and of course, on the Campfire. And to try and do that, this tree mortality, you have some of the grant history that we adopted. Five new grants on October 30th of this year, moving forward on that. Tree mortality status in the county, 29.2 million dead trees, statewide about 129 million. On February 6th, this board commented or committed to perform 2.2 million. Our current status to date is we've removed 455 trees, 4555 trees. Sorry, it's been a lot of numbers today. Total project cost today is about 201,000. We are doing this for $44 a tree, and statewide average cost is about 570. So we're, we're well below that. It's just been doing a remarkable job. The five projects, the two that are completed, the Parker Pass project and the Ponderosa project, and scheduled for spring, we have the Western Divide 1B, Western Divide 1A in Nation Valley, scheduled for fall of 2019. This work is 100%, tree mortality work is 100% reimbursable by the grant process. Parker Pass project is completed. We've removed 3,800 trees, 425 total acres treated. That's understorying some of the brush. Budgeted cost was about 292. And we did it for 122 with 169.8 in savings. We were able to use a contracted tree follower on some of this, so this was able to help us see what that would look like in the future as far as hybrid model. Ponderosa, different from an egress safety, you have, like the Parker Pass project, having routes of egress. This was more of a community fire break. We removed 700 trees, 45 acres treated, $195,000 budgeted cost, and we did it for 79,000, savings of 115. Again, using our crews as a contracted tree follower. The proposed Western Divide 1B, scheduled for spring of 2019. Scheduled to be 510 acres treated, around $408,000 and 3,000 trees to be removed. The 1A project, the extension of that in summer of 2019, 3,575 trees, proposed, and a project budget cost of a little over half a million. Nation Valley project is, we get into Badger area, scheduled to start fall of next year. 3,500 trees, 580 acres, and $580,000 project cost. And I was remiss. Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. D A O Britt and Deanne Peterson. All the public comment, I figured.
Please state your address for the record.
We have the before and after shots of Parker Pass, just looking at some of this. I do have one of these slides that will actually make sound, so it'll be great for you, a little break in the action. Before and after, and as you go up there, when we first started this in 2014, just driving up there, seeing what the, the impacts of the tree mortality would do to now. Obviously, the 29 million is going to go up, but devastating. Some of the things that I used to see when I would go up there as a child are just, they're not there anymore. Again, a before and after, and this is primarily with our egress, trying to get people out of there. And if anybody does need some free firewood, we do have it in abundance. Parker Pass Mountain Road 50, from the beginning of what you see to now the aftershock. And then one more brief before and after. And again, this, this Panorama Heights area, it would be almost 90% tree mortality, so it's very sad up there. Accomplishments, approved roadside safety for thousands of travelers and residents. Successfully secured Parker Pass, viable evacuation route. Ponderosa, as we have these wildland threats we had in Doyle Springs area, it's going to reduce the probability of those coming into those communities. They did go out on a couple of emergencies. They are readily deployed. That's not their primary function. Technical rescue. They experienced only one reportable injury in 14,800 hours of work. And as that, those crews went up there, I'd cringe and cross my fingers and knock on wood every morning because you have the least amount of tree, least amount of training with the highest hazard operation in the free world. So very, 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 very safe crew. We're under budget by almost $300,000 and removing 30 trees per day. It's just remarkable what they're doing, and energy of these early 20-somethings, it's just commendable. And with the experienced workforce, we are going to hire three of them full-time. So as we move forward, we will have to recruit. A next step with this, as part of this, would be to obtain two F-250s at the price of $45,000, a wood chipper. We can start discussions with Mr. Britt on mid-year budget review process or next 19, 20 proposed. Five grants were approved by your board on October 30th. And here's the, the one you've been waiting for.
Put the microphone up to it, chief.
Put the microphone up to it, chief.
Oh, yeah.
How many snoring last night?
No, it was earlier.
This is a smaller tree here. Twenty-four inches in diameter.
Kind of hit the camera.
He didn't say timber.
He didn't say timber. Yes, he did. The volume wasn't working very well. But as you drop some of those trees, and they'd be dropping along, uh, our, uh, egress routes, uh, some of those would just vaporize when they hit the pavement. It's amazing the amount of tree depth and budget left there. So requested actions at this point, received presentation by Tulare County Fire regarding tree mortality, kind of catch up on the history. Um, authorize us to hire 10 additional people, seasonal extra help firefighters, and then the equipment and 31,000 PPE that came in this year, and 24,000 training, and approve the necessary budget amount. That was quick and comment, uh, trying to read room after the, uh, the earlier presentations. Uh, Mr. Coyne, uh, Division Chief McLaughlin, the CAO's office have all been essential on where this tree mortality task force and helping us put everything together. So we'd answer any questions.
Any questions or comments?
An exemplary job keeping the cost down and getting the job done.
And, and I just want to say
Supervisor Crocker has asked to speak, and so I've given him permission to speak.
I, I just wanted to say, uh, yes, the cost, thanks for keeping the cost down. But I, I want, and you already highlighted it, so I won't belabor it, but the trees are still there in place. So we've, we've eliminated the issue of evacuations and for the trees falling on the road or on individuals, but there's still, there's still a few fuel issue, uh, up in the mountains. So, I mean, it's not like, you know, we're, we're out of the, you know, we're not out of the woods yet, even though, yeah.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Supervisor Vanapool.
I was just going to say, great job to your team for the safety. I know that what they're doing is very dangerous and, uh, I think it's really important that they're doing what they're doing and being safe because obviously when injuries happen, that's a, a cost to the county. So you might not have been as much under budget had, uh, injuries taken place. So great job with your crew staying safe.
Any questions?
And with that, I would move for approval.
Motion by Supervisor Vanapool, seconded by Supervisor Crocker. Please cast your votes. Votes are...
Thank you, thank you, Charlie.
Thank you very much for your time.
You want to vote?
Good job.
Yeah, sure. Eh, okay. I'll abstain.
Votes are unanimous. Okay, that takes us to item number 32, request from the RMA to approve a statutory exemption consistent with the SEQA Title 14. I'm not going to read the rest of it. Dave, welcome.
Yes, uh, good afternoon Chairman Worthley, members of the board, Mr. Britt, CAO, Ms. Peterson, and Mr. Wong with County Council. Uh, Dave Bryant, Chief Planner, Special Projects with Tulare County RMA. Presented for your consideration this afternoon is the Tulare County Climate Action Plan 2018 update. Uh, this is, this proposed update, uh, will update the existing climate action plan that was adopted by your board, uh, in 2012. Uh, with us this morning is, uh, Dave Mitchell, uh, Senior Air Quality Science Scientist with Mitchell Air Quality Consulting. Uh, Mr. Mitchell, uh, assisted the county in preparing the, uh, 2012 Climate Action Plan and has been actively involved, uh, in assisting the county, uh, with our annual progress reports of the Climate Action Plan, uh, and again, is assisting us, uh, with the proposed, uh, 2018 Climate Action Plan update. Uh, Dave, uh, has a presentation, uh, and at the conclusion of that, we'll come back with requests for your consideration.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chairman Worthley, members of the board. Little background, as Dave said, the cap was first adopted in 2012. There's a provision in there that we've updated, uh, once the state had adopted the 2030 mission target and then did a scoping plan to, uh, to, uh, implement the strategy. The, uh, the 27 scoping plan was approved in 2017. Process began mostly after that with staff and, and I to, uh, do the update that was required. Little summary, the, uh, cap update includes a new baseline inventory for 2015 and 2030 and projections consistent with the 2017 scoping plan. It's a state document. It, uh, assesses the impact of the, all the, the measures that are in the scoping plan on the emissions in Tulare County to, uh, help us figure out what needs to be done in, locally. The, uh, the plan now has a 2030 target inventory that's, uh, consistent with the state's inventory changes that's needed to get to the, the SB 32 target. One of the things was, we found was, after we went through the, the math on the measures that were adopted by the state and with the local measures. Excuse me. Anyway, the, uh, the cap measures were sufficient to reach the milestone needed for 2030, uh, along with all the other regulations were adopted by the state. And one of the other things that's in it is a methodology for assessing projects after 2020. The previous cap, uh, got you up to 2020 with, uh, a procedure in place at that time. Uh, the inventory, uh, is, uh, one of the important components of a cap. And this one, the, it's main, main source of emissions in the, in the inventory is the mobile sources. In this case, we were able to use the VMT from the 2018 Regional Transportation Plan and Sustainable Community Strategy. So we're, we're consistent with, uh, that process. This is considered a comprehensive cap update and it's required by the Sierra Club GPU settlement within one year of the date that the TCAG adopted the 2018. So we're with, well within that because the, the RTP was adopted last summer. A little bit in the inventory that's approved is, uh, there's data from the electrical utilities that's more detail. Southern California Edison especially, helpful in dividing it by, uh, with the responsible sources. Then the, uh, previous update was done in 2016, also for the Sierra Club settlement. And that one, all those categories that were added before are, are still in here. A word on the projections, that's the future year, looking out to 2030. Um, you know, you see in the progress reports we've done, the population, which is the basis of most of the growth in emissions, has been either stagnant or declining in recent years. And so like 2015, 18 was negative 1.7%. But we're assuming now that it's going to go back to, uh, what was projected by DOF or Department of Finance to 2030. Looking at the scoping plan strategy very quickly, uh, it's very comprehensive. It goes after pretty much every source of greenhouse gases you can imagine and very, uh, also ambitious with the, the, especially the doubling of energy efficiency of existing buildings is very tough. We have as many as 4.2 million zero emission vehicles in California by 2030. And we're, we're starting with a low baseline, so that's a, a very rapid, uh, increase. And just going down the list, the, the, uh, one of the things you point out is they, they are getting all sources, including methane, refrigerants, and, and the new ones in the, in the scoping plan is also the, what they call short-lived, uh, climate pollutants. And one of those is black carbon. And that, those are mainly controlled through the criteria pollutant programs with the air districts. There are things like fireplaces and particulate emissions from vehicles, trucks. Then, uh, anyway, one other action that's in the plan is to increase the, the Senate Bill 375 reduction targets for, uh, light, light duty or passenger vehicle miles traveled. And it, it, anyway, the, the COG in their, in their transportation plan had, uh, uh, accepted those, it's increased renési and said they're going to meet the target. Overall, the strategy implementation from the state, uh, is, is, the way it's, it's structured is intended to meet 2030 target, uh, basically with regulations and a little bit from the, the, here's the kind of the main point, uh, the cap for the update strategy. We continue to implement the objectives and policies of the 2030 mineral plant update and the 2020 12. There's no new, no new policies or programs that are in here. It's, uh, the main update was, uh, to, uh, show all the new policies and how they apply to the county and the, all the mission sources in the county. The, uh, you know, we're continuing the process of being developed, developing the county consistent with the blueprint and it's, and it's focusing the new urban development in the existing rural community hamlets and urban development boundaries, legacy areas. Add to, uh, density goals. And so far, the, the county is, uh, you know, especially, most of the development's going to occur in cities anyway, which are becoming more dense and smaller lots and more apartments. So the, the, it looks like the density goals are, are well underway. Uh, then, uh, on the other front, we're, the county's responsibility is, we're the, the county is the enforcement agency for implementing the Title 24 Building Code standards and CalGreen for like water savings and then outdoor water with the, the Model Water Manscape ordinance. And then, uh, as, uh, another task for the county would be encouraging alternative, alternative energy projects and controversial retrofits of existing buildings. So when somebody comes in with a solar project, you know, it's helpful to be, uh, supportive of those or, or some biomass projects or things that come in. Then, uh, finally, uh, the proj, the projects that are new that come in and subject to SEQA, uh, that are consistent with the Climate Action Plan can go through a checklist procedure and they'll be, uh, consistent and then they, they wouldn't have to do any further analysis. And, uh, it's kind of similar to the old way. And, and this one, it has, uh, also has the same quantitative process that was in the, in the previous, um, uh, edition of the, of the Climate Action Plan for, to apply to 2030 projects instead of the 2020 projects. And with that, I'll turn it back to Dave.
Considered for your consideration this morning, a request, uh, to approve a statutory exemption consistent with SEQA Title 14, California Code of Regulation, Section 15262, feasibility in planning studies, and Section 5061B3 and II to adopt the Climate Action Plan 2018 update inclusive of a comprehensive inventory update to satisfy the Sierra Club GPU settlement requirement for a comprehensive inventory update due by August 20th, 2019.
Very good. Any questions or comments? Yes, Supervisor Crocker.
Well, I, uh, I just want to, um, highlight our energy, um, our solar projects that we've got going on right now. And I think that that shows that we as a county are leading the way, um, in regards of these actions. We're helping to reduce our footprint, but we're doing it in a, in a way that's also reducing costs. I mean, we're looking at a, an ability to, you know, save a million bucks a year approximately, uh, on electric costs. So there's ways to do this in a cost-effective manner that helps save taxpayers' dollars as well as helping meet, uh, some of our state regulatory goals.
Comments, questions? Entertainer motion? By Ennis Supervisor, and then seconded by Supervisor Crocker. Please cast your votes. Are unanimous?
Thank you.
completes our open session today. Council closed session.
Mr. Chairman, did you want to continue until a time certain at 2:00 or 2:30 for?
How long do we think we're going to take? Let's do it quick.
Okay, so we have items, um, A and, they're off calendar. Item B was heard and there is no report out. We'll hear CD and app and close session and there may be a report out.